All right, apologies for the delay, but I will reconvene the Executive and Legislative Nominations Committee Public Hearing for Tuesday, January 17, 2023 to order. And with that, we'll immediately go into recess for just about 15 minutes as we wait a few of our committee members that are on their way. So I promise it won't be too long, but we will recess for about 15 minutes and we'll get back. Thank you. All right, apologies for the delay, but I will reconvene the Executive and Legislative Nominations Committee Public Hearing for Tuesday, January 17, 2023. We have four nominees on today's agenda, but before we get started, are there any comments from my Senate co-chair? Oh, thank you. All right. Well, before we call up our first nominee of the day, given this is our first meeting since the untimely death of our friend and colleague, Q. Williams, I think it's appropriate with the committee's permission to give, to observe a moment of silence for our friend and colleague. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll get started with our first agenda item of the day, which is a House resolution, which is the reconfirmation of Catherine Dykes of West Hartford to be Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection. Commissioner Dykes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for being with us. Before we begin, if you will, please raise your right hand. Do you promise, swear, and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, great. And with that, we'll give you a few minutes for any opening remarks.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Representative. Co-chairs Duff and Concepcion, co-vice-chairs Looney and Godfrey, ranking members Kelly and Yakarino, and members of the Committee on Executive and Legislative Nominations. What an honor it is to be before you again today. Four years ago, I came before this committee hoping to be confirmed as Commissioner of Connecticut's Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and I'm grateful to have this opportunity to appear before you again and seek your support as I continue to have the Governor's nomination to continue as the DEEP Commissioner. It's an incredible agency with a broad mission that I think is one of the best in state government and really privileged to have the opportunity to continue to work with a fabulous team at DEEP, many members of whom are here in the hearing room today. Over the past four years, we have weathered some incredible challenges together. A global pandemic that challenged us at DEEP to maintain critical services, especially outdoor recreation options for the public in some extraordinary times. We experienced a retirement cliff that saw many of our veteran staff depart and a whole new wave of talent, new talent coming in to join our agency and our mission, as well as a rapidly changing climate for energy and environmental policy. I'm really proud of the work that we've accomplished at DEEP over the last four years. Soon after I became DEEP Commissioner, we established a 20 by 20 initiative to help improve the transparency and predictability and efficiency of our permitting processes. We've created a really popular concierge service for applicants, cut our permitting backlog by 58% and took major steps in partnership with the legislature to overhaul spill reporting and the Transfer Act. We are working to advance environmental justice at DEEP. We've established Connecticut Equity and Environmental Justice Advisory Council to engage with environmental justice communities on a range of different matters critical to our environmental future. We've supported programs in partnership with other agencies such as DOT, like the Park Connect program to increase transportation access for residents, to be able to visit our seven wonderful state shoreline parks by providing safe and reliable transportation. Early in 2019, we relaunched the Governor's Council on Climate Change to ensure that we had a focus not only on how to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in line with these state statutory targets to achieve an 80% reduction in emissions economy-wide by 2050, but also to ensure that we were developing the best policies and coordination to prepare and protect communities from the impacts of climate change. We've certainly seen many of those unfold here in Connecticut over the last four years. We've worked closely with the legislature to adopt groundbreaking legislation to help reduce air pollution and emissions from the transportation sector, to establish a zero-carbon electric grid target by 2040, and we're working closely with our neighboring states and federal partners to deploy an unprecedented amount of federal funding to help enhance clean air, climate resilience, clean and affordable energy across the state of Connecticut and the New England region. We're continuing to address the retirement of our waste-to-energy infrastructure. Since 2020, we've convened over 100 municipalities as part of the Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management to explore sustainable waste management strategies that make sense for our communities and our environment and our economy. We've spearheaded innovative programs to help capture organic material out of the waste stream and support more effective recycling. We recently celebrated, just across the hall, the third anniversary of the PFAS Action Plan, working closely with DPH and other important partners to help us address these emerging contaminants. And with the General Assembly's support, serving the people of Connecticut and in partnership with the legislature on these really important issues. And with that, I welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and congratulations on your renomination. Just a couple of questions from me before I open it up to the rest of the committee. While my district, well, the site is no longer in my district. I do have to ask you about the MIRA facility here in the city of Hartford. So can you just give us an update on where we are? Is it permanently closed? You know, what do you see as a viable legitimate use for that site?
Great. Well, thank you for that question, Representative. I think there's no, it's one of those issues that is taking up a lot of our focus at Deep at the moment, and we hope to have the opportunity to work with the legislature on some transformative legislative proposals that will help to secure the future of that site. I think we have two parallel challenges. One is how to handle, from the statewide perspective, the retirement of that facility. The facility closed permanently in July of this year, stopped accepting additional tonnage of municipal solid waste. And that has put us in a position where we're now exporting about 860,000 tons per year of municipal solid waste to communities outside of Connecticut. And so we're working very hard on policies that will help us regain self-sufficiency in how we manage our waste disposal. But in the meantime, in parallel with that, we have a duty and a responsibility to ensure that that facility and that site, South Meadows, is that we have a path forward for the redevelopment of that critical property. Certainly, we are, from a regulatory perspective, reviewing the decommissioning plan that MIRA has put together just to ensure that the site is secure. And then the next big opportunity will be looking at the path forward for remediation of that site, as well as what a possible future use will be that's compatible with Hartford's goals. And so we know that the MIRA Board has about $50 million in reserves. We think that it's really important that that funding is prioritized by the Board first and foremost for the cleanup of that site. We know Hartford has done its share over the years in hosting that facility for the benefit of the region, and I think it's important to the Lamont administration that we work with the legislature to find a path forward for redevelopment.
Thank you for that, and I'm looking forward to working with you on that. Just another question, there was a recent, I think it was a Connecticut News Junkie article that was talking about the regional approach of energy, and you had mentioned in the article that Connecticut would continue to be subject to price swings in the energy market until we diversify sources of energy. Can you expand a little bit on how we do that?
You bet. Yes, thank you. So I think, from thinking of the article, it really, I think, tees up from the event that I had the pleasure to join the Governor and Senator Blumenthal at last week. We have a, the ISO New England, you know, we're part of a regional grid with all the New England states, and we rely on a regional wholesale energy market that's overseen by the ISO New England that really kind of sets the foundational prices that then are reflected in retail rates for ratepayers here in Connecticut. And that ISO New England market relies heavily on, over 50% of the generation in that market is natural gas generation. We're experiencing, we know historically that Connecticut, especially in the wintertime, that the New England gas pipeline system is not sufficient to be able to serve all of those natural gas power plants, and so we have winter reliability challenges, and we've been at risk of some price spikes and reliability challenges as a result of that. But now with the war in Ukraine, we've also seen that the commodity prices for natural gas have been increasing significantly, in part because we're in competition with Europe on this importing a significant amount of natural gas and other fossil resources to help them buffer the supply impacts and the weaponization essentially of energy commodities by Russia. So all of that, what does that have to do with rates here in Connecticut? It just means that gas, when natural gas becomes more expensive, the price of generation in New England, it's highly dependent on natural gas, also increases significantly. And so that's why we're seeing these impacts. Of course, I think we're, you know, the solution is to diversify our fuel sources. And energy independence is something that we've talked about a lot in this country and that we need desperately in New England because we've traditionally been reliant on importing our energy resources from other states and elsewhere in the US. But the good news is that we have a lot of energy resources that we can develop here in the region that will help us buffer and insulate against some of that volatility in fossil prices that are driving up rates. And that includes, first and foremost, continuing our investments in energy efficiency. Really appreciate all the support from the legislature to restore the funding for the energy efficiency programs. We've seen a 45% increase in home residents seeking to sign up for those energy efficiency audits and taking advantage of those programs. Also, investments in offshore wind that were advanced on bipartisan basis here in the General Assembly have enabled us to procure a gigawatt of offshore wind. That performs really well in the wintertime, and when those projects come online, will help to buffer against and displace some of our dependence on natural gas. Retaining the nuclear facility, the Millstone Nuclear Facility, I can't imagine where we would be today if we, if that Millstone facility had shut down prematurely from reliability and a price affordability aspect as well. So I'm really proud of the work that we did with the legislature to help secure that contract. And then in the going forward, scaling up investments in things like hydropower from Canada. It's been talked about a lot. We've been working on it for some time, but we're actually, I think, on the verge of seeing a real breakthrough in being able to get transmission lines built and sited that will be able to bring low-cost hydropower into the region. This is sort of a portfolio approach to build out more resources that can lessen our reliance on natural gas, and I think it will have the benefit of improving the reliability of the grid as well as insulating us from some of those volatile price swings that occur in a market that's otherwise very sensitive to gas prices. So I appreciate all the support that the legislature has provided in giving us the authority to be able to work with other states, secure those procurements. And now with the support of our congressional delegation, we have enormous amounts of tax credits available from the federal government, as well as competitive grants that we are applying for to help buy down the cost of some of those investments. So that will also contribute to the affordability of the strategy.
Thank you. I might have another question or two, but I will open it up to my committee members, starting with the co-chairman Duff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioner. Good to see you again. Before we get into the energy realm, you know, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has such a, such a large portfolio of many different things. But I'll just speak, you know, as we're kind of all back in the building here, hopefully post-pandemic kind of. One of the, one of the areas that was very successful under your agency was our parks during the pandemic and Passport to Parks that we put together on a bipartisan basis in the 2017 budget. Can you talk a little bit about the parks, the conditions they're in, and kind of the future of that? Because, again, when people needed places to go, needed a little, get outside a little bit, they utilized the wonderful resources that we have in Connecticut.
Thank you so much for that question, Senator. It's great to see you. Great to be back in the building. And, you know, I was really struck when the pandemic started. You know, Governor Lamont called me in March of 2020, and he said, you know, we saw other states around us. We're starting to close their parks, close their beaches, and he said, people have to have a place to go, and we have to keep our parks open, you know, no matter what. And so we worked really hard to be able to provide those, what became a real critical service for the public. And I'm very proud of the work that we did. And I have to say, with a lot of calls from members of the Environment Committee who were equally committed and anxious to make sure that we had those resources available. Passport to Parks was, thank God that we had that program in place because it provides about 16 to 20 million flex wage to that in the annual budget. It supports our staffing, including over 500 seasonal employees that we bring on to help support our park resources. But most importantly, it enables us to not charge any entry fee for any Connecticut resident coming to our parks. And during the pandemic, we saw a 50% increase in the number of people visiting our parks that summer, and it has continued until today, which is delightful, as the Deep Commissioner, to see that some of those behavior changes for the pandemic really stuck. But it has also meant that some of our beloved parks are getting loved to death a bit, and so we've been really promoting a message of stewardship. We really appreciate the support from the General Assembly, particularly the Governor and the General Assembly with the budget over the last two cycles has included funding for additional INCON officers, which is really important to help us maintain public safety and services for folks at the parks, as well as a really unprecedented amount of bond funds and ARPA funds, $50 million in total that were authorized last year that are enabling us to refurbish and refresh a lot of those treasured resources across the parks. So we have over 1,000 buildings that we maintain across our parks. 7% of the land area of the state, 110 state parks, that's a lot of facilities to maintain. And so I'm really proud and pleased to have those resources that will enable us to refresh some of those facilities and make sure the public and visitors will be able to continue to enjoy a high standard, you know, when they come to visit our parks. We have a park within 15 minutes of every person living in Connecticut. I hear over and over from folks that this is the reason that they stay in Connecticut or the reason that they move to Connecticut is to have that easy access to the outdoors. So it's a really, really wonderful part of our mission.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I hear that as well in my area, that people just love Sherwood Island and many other parks in Connecticut. And one of the reasons why they moved to Connecticut was the access to the park. So I just want to raise that only because it is such an important part of your agency. On the energy front, and kind of jumping off of my co-chair's questions about kind of regional cooperation, and, you know, you and I both know the fact, the lack of the piping that we have coming into Connecticut is an issue for us, and the lack of hydro that comes down from Hydro Quebec, no thanks to New Hampshire stopping that, and, you know, other, and we're waiting for some other clean energy generation to come on board too. So we are at the mercy of kind of international events when it comes to our supply, our natural gas supply, for sure. Recently, PURA had a, had a multi-state hearing with Massachusetts and forcing New Hampshire. It chose not to participate, which I think was in their detriment. But it was the first time, really, two states had gotten together on some of these issues. And I believe in your testimony, you talked about in the second to last paragraph about multi-state cooperation with your department and other departments as well. And wondering if you can just expand on kind of the value, you know, it's small states in New England that are, that have issues with capacity, natural gas capacity with piping, and as we try and do more with clean energy, the importance of your role and what you've done with regard to multi-state cooperation.
Thank you for that question, Senator. It's actually been one of the, the great privileges of having served in prior, you know, several roles at Deep over the years. I started off as the Deputy Commissioner for Energy in 2012, and then had about two and a half years at PURA as the chair there before becoming the Deep Commissioner. And in each of those roles, I was able to represent the state through the Governor's nomination on the New England States Committee on Electricity, or NESCO. It's really unique, New England, because we are six states sharing one market that it forces us to have to work together. But through that experience over this last decade of serving that role, I've really built a lot of strong relationships with my counterparts in the other New England states. And that's really critical for us to make progress on advancing some of these alternative energy sources that will promote energy independence and energy affordability. And so just to give you a little snapshot of how that's going. Last Friday, at close of business, we hit send on two applications to the Department of Energy. They have a funding opportunity under the bipartisan infrastructure law for up to $5 billion to help subsidize the cost of transmission build-outs. And so I'm really proud that my staff and we're working together. We were able to get all of the New England states to sign on to support a proposal for an integrated strategic regional build-out of transmission for offshore wind. Got amazing offshore wind resources off of Martha's Vineyard, but not, we don't have a grid that's really built out to cost-effectively integrate those resources into the region. And so it's really something that one, it's hard for one state to tackle on their own. But we worked really hard over the holidays, you know, with the other states and got everyone signed on to that proposal, which, if accepted by DOE, will, could provide up to $250 million to reduce the cost of that build-out. In addition, working together, we were able to support a proposal that Vermont submitted for a transmission line to connect hydropower from Canada and bring it into the New England grid. That proposal also would be eligible for the $250 million, which would be a significant reduction in the cost of that project, and it's a line that is fully permitted and would be able to transit down the, on the bottom of Lake Champlain and then plug into, plug into the grid. So, you know, these are examples of now with the federal funding there, there are very short deadlines from the federal government to get these applications in, and it really benefits states that can, you know, have existing relationships and strong relationships to work together to be able to bring, you know, these proposals forward. And so I'm really proud of how we're able to leverage, you know, that long history of working together to take it, you know, to really try to seize this moment of unprecedented funding. But in a regional grid, you know, it is, we have, you know, we're not a one-state ISO, like New York is its own, you know, has its own energy market, California, Texas. New England, we have to work together, and I think that this is a time of unprecedented cooperation. And I think that that speaks, you know, not just in the executive branch, but also on the legislative side as well. And I appreciate, you know, the leadership from yourself and other senators, you know, supporting PURA and engaging the Utility Commission in Massachusetts and New Hampshire on that important topic of standard service as well.
Great. Thank you very much, and I'm so glad that that Lake Champlain line is permanent already and hopefully just needs some federal funding to get moving. That'll be, those are all game changers for us and takes away the reliance that we have and the issues that we have with capacity with natural gas. Last question I have for you, Commissioner, is on, with the bipartisan infrastructure bill and the fact that you see many automobile companies now saying that they're going to reduce their gas consumption motors and go to electric. We've been working on the issue of range anxiety for, since Governor Lawrie was in office. First time I ever heard that term. But now it's a, it's a real issue for folks, but I think Connecticut has been well. We've been strategic about it, and we've been ahead of the curve on it. But as we transition into new types of transportation modes, is Connecticut, do you think, in your opinion, are going to be where consumers can, if they get the electric cars, which are promised to be made and only made, that we will then have enough range confidence for folks?
Yeah, thank you for that, Senator. I think that bipartisan infrastructure law truly is a game changer in helping to end range anxiety. We know that we have a great partnership with the Connecticut, with the auto dealers, with Cara, and, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, what people are hearing on the lot, salesman, right? The number one concern that people cite about what they're trying to choose between an EV or an internal combustion engine vehicle is, where am I going to plug in? How am I going to charge? So the DOT has $55 million that they are receiving from the federal government to help build out chargers all along the, our major highways and corridors, which will really help with ending that range anxiety. We also, Deep advocated and supported a decision from PURA that is providing for utilities to be able to give rebates to homeowners and renters who want to install charging at home. And that's another really important part of having affordable and convenient access to charging. So I feel very confident that that barrier of range anxiety over the next, you know, two, three years is going to be truly eliminated, and that will contribute to more people being able to access EVs. In addition, of course, the Connecticut Clean Air Act has enabled us to increase funding for the Reggie, sorry, the cheaper rebate, as well as now with the Inflation Reduction Act, $7,000, $7,500, you know, tax credits that have been extended and expanded to help make the purchase of EVs even more affordable. So, you know, it's great to see the manufacturers moving in this direction. We know that there's a lot of enthusiasm out there among consumers who want to purchase these vehicles, especially as they can be more affordable to fuel at this moment. So I'm confident that that range anxiety question finally will be crossed off the list.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I know the job is complicated, but I certainly appreciate all your hard work for the state. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I did fail to mention that, as is the case with other committees, we are working on a hybrid model. So we do have some committee members that are on Zoom, and I see a couple of their hands are up, which I promise I will get to, but with that, I'll turn it over to my ranking. But with that, I'll turn it over to my ranking member here, Representative Accarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's a pleasure to be here and it's good to see you, Commissioner, and thanks for stepping up again. But I do have quite a few questions. We had a nice conversation Friday. So we mentioned Hydro Quebec, we, I served on energy with Senator Duff twelve years ago. We pushed more natural gas than more hydroelectricity from Canada. We really haven't had a full deal since then, and I know we're on a start now. And you did mention that the agreement for offshore wind with our New England partners. But New Hampshire still hasn't signed on. So over the last twelve years, we really haven't made any headway when it comes to lowering the cost of energy for our consumers for everybody. And tragic was happening in Ukraine right now, but we've had these spikes year after year. And we really have not expanded natural gas. We have not expanded the hydroelectricity, which is very efficient and clean. We did, we do offshore wind, solar EVs. But that's part of the puzzle and the big part of it is not having enough energy though for our power plants in the winter. So what are we, what are we going to do for residents now? We really haven't lowered the cost. And I appreciate everything we've tried to do. And I know it's complex, but we really, in this state, we haven't really done a lot to lower the cost.
Well, thank you for that question. And I also want to say how appreciative I was of your time on Friday and enjoyed the conversation as well. Certainly, you know, these, these infrastructure investments that I am confident will lead to more affordable and reliable energy will take some years to deploy. The offshore wind contracts that we signed in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen are targeted for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six in-service date. So those are coming. The energy efficiency investments that we're continuing to support are delivering savings, you know, for residents and businesses today, once they're installed. But, you know, as much as we are expediting our work to deploy these investments, it takes some time for them to be in place. And so, you know, we've heard from, from many residents and businesses, from stakeholders, from Governor Lamont has been asking me, what are we going to do for this winter? And of course, I was really pleased to, you know, over just after Thanksgiving, we brought the utilities in, had a lot of, you know, discussions about what can we do in the near term? And so we were proud to be able to secure a contribution from EverSource shareholders of ten million dollars, plus now PURA has approved a settlement with UI for another three million contribution to help folks who are in need of some assistance this winter. Those dollars are being supported from her folks who are not otherwise eligible for the LIHEAP program for energy assistance. We're also, the Millstone contract that we signed in twenty nineteen has, because the energy market prices have been really high, we've actually been making a profit on that contract over this past year. And so we were able to ask PURA to return those additional profits from the Millstone contract on an expedited basis. So customers will be seeing an approximately eleven dollar a month additional credit on their bills for January through April of this year. Those things take a little bit of the sting out of these high energy prices. You know, I think that the, it's ultimately, you know, this is the, the challenge that we have of not having accelerated these investments in years prior. I worked in twenty thirteen, fourteen, which I think overlaps with the same time that you're talking about on the Energy and Technology Committee. We worked so hard to try to get all of the states in the region on board with a comprehensive approach to, you know, reducing reliance on natural gas, but also exploring whether there's a path to expand gas infrastructure to ensure that the gas power plants that we're paying for in the energy market could actually be available to serve customers reliably twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five days of the year. And that was, effort was not successful. And I think today where we are, I think that it's even less, the prospects for seeing new gas infrastructure built out in the region are even less, you know, less likely. In part, many of these pipelines would have to transit the state of New York and the enhancements that they've made to their, you know, environmental standards in New York, I think makes it even less likely that there would be support for permitting and citing those resources, notwithstanding, you know, how that would be, you know, how we would factor that into our Global Solutions Act considerations here in Connecticut. So I think it's really important that we, you know, kind of be focused on those, those opportunities and those investments are compatible with our decarbonization initiatives and likely to get cited and permitted on an expedited basis. And that's where we're focused really on securing those federal dollars and looking at a whole portfolio of clean investments that are low cost and could reduce the reliance on natural gas. I will say in the near term, so I've talked about this, this winter, you know, energy assistance that we've put in place, the longer term energy infrastructure that we're seeking to accelerate in the medium term, the next few years while we wait for the clean energy investments to come online. We also have some other critical resources such as the Everett LNG terminal, liquefied natural gas terminal in Boston. And we, you know, I've been very involved in through our regional work and the, you know, reviewing and advocating related to the costs and, but of the contracts that the ISO New England put in place to prevent that facility from shutting down. That's going to be a big question coming up is, is how long that facility can keep going? We've had some discussions with neighboring states and sent a letter to our New England delegation asking the Department of Energy and Congress to consider as they think about modernizing the Strategic Petroleum Reserve, the possibility of establishing some type of an energy security reserve here in New England, which could include having emergency sort of backup LNG resources that could be available to be injected into the grid to help us through some critical, you know, winter reliability challenges. So those are some of the more short-lived resources that we're looking at. Again, we, it's, it's, it's not acceptable to have a grid. It's not reliable and not affordable. And it's taking a portfolio of near-term, medium-term and longer-term actions to help us ensure that.
I appreciate that, but we, and we should be pushing electric vehicles, solar. But the more electric vehicles we have, we discussed this, we need some way to power them. And right now it's just electricity through natural gas. So we really don't have a plan, honestly, for the future. Liquid natural gas can only, it works, but we're going to need more than that, I think. And wind is great, but I don't know how much energy we actually get from wind and I do support it. But there's a cost to it because for our fish and our waters. So there's, it's complicated, but we, if we're going to push more electric, and I think we should, we still have EVs. We still have to fuel them, you know, and the only way to fuel them is through natural gas. Am I wrong?
I'm so glad you asked that question because I get that question a lot. And actually, I want to credit the General Assembly because when the General Assembly deregulated our energy, you know, the utility ownership generation, they retained this strong tradition of planning for energy supply, reliable energy supply in the form of the Integrated Resources Plan and DEEP conducts that plan process every two years to make sure that we look out over the next decade and that we have a plan to have sufficient electricity to serve all of the demand in our state. And so we recently updated that Integrated Resource Plan in twenty twenty-one. And we specifically made sure that we included an assumption there of a significant deployment of electric vehicles. So I think I refer to that plan, be happy to follow up. We have done that detailed analysis and we feel very confident that we'll have sufficient power supply to be able to serve the additional electric vehicles or heat pumps or other types of demand that's coming onto the system. The ISO New England is also factoring that those demand forecasts into their, their planning as well. The interesting thing about electric vehicles actually is that they could provide a critical service to enhance the reliability of the grid because they're actually, they look like cars, but they're actually batteries on wheels. And so if you've seen the ads for the Ford, you know, F-150, which I hope someday to get one of those, you know, they can actually serve as a backup generator and plug in and power your home for, you know, a day or two. And so if we think about the vehicle to grid opportunities with transit buses or school buses with large batteries that could be plugged in or used for resilient, you know, grid infrastructure during either hot days and we have peak demand and we can plug in and discharge from a battery or, or during a grid outage, EVs actually have some interesting flexibility there. But there's more policy, you know, that's needed to put, get those, those frameworks in place. But I'm actually excited to see how that unfolds.
Thank you. And when, when we discussed it Friday, I know it's a little hypothetical, but I think I might have said this, Senator Looney, but a year and a half ago, electric bus ran opening. Hundred twenty years ago, hundred forty years ago, we had electric trials. Maybe we should think about going back that way. But I, I want to go to, I have a few more questions though. So to Chairman Concepcion's about MIRA, there's a company in North Branford that has a, they reached out to your office, I think for the last few months, about zero emissions for, for waste or trash, but you haven't responded to them. I don't know how your plans, you know, if you remember seeing a letter from them. They want to offer the trash, similar to MIRA, you know, removal of trash. What was zero emissions? It's done in Europe. And hopefully maybe you could meet with them. It's not my district, but they've reached out to me and they knew I was going to speak to you today. And I'll get you the name of the company. I don't know how you feel about that, but.
I'm so glad you brought it up and I'll be sure to go check on that and follow up if, if that's, I'm sorry if we didn't follow up there, but we'll be glad to do so. It's actually, I think, one of the really exciting parts of our, you know, next chapter of Connecticut's Waste Future is that there's so much happening in terms of emerging technologies for the waste sector. You know, when we think about food scraps, twenty-two percent of what we're sending to be into landfills or to traditional waste energy facilities today is organic material that could be turned into renewable energy at an anaerobic digester. We have one commercially scaled AD facility in operation. But it could also be used to create sustainable aviation fuel. There's brand new tax credits that are now available through the Inflation Reduction Act to support sustainable aviation fuel. So that could be a possible new additional sort of end use to help decarbonize aerospace in the aviation industry, which is a tough one to decarbonize. That's just one example of some of the emerging opportunities in the waste space to not only help make sure we have reliable and affordable places to send our municipal solid waste, but also that we could utilize our waste stream to support more sustainable and decarbonized alternatives for other parts of our economy. So we'll be eager to see, learn more about that particular project. And we're actually, just to tease, we're something that's coming up. We're going to be issuing a request for information to developers because we've heard from a lot of different developers coming in over the last, you know, eighteen months, especially as they, you know, it's become clear that the MIRA facility was going to close down. So we want to create one record, one place to gather up all the different information, vet those different technologies, help understand what kinds of site characteristics developers would need or financing that they would need in order to pursue their projects, the compatibility of the project with our, you know, air quality and other sustainability objectives and those sorts of things. So we'll be glad to share that with that company and I'll look forward to following up.
And another question, I have only a couple more questions. We passed last session of twenty twenty-two, the bottle bill. And now there's conflict, conflicting, the hard seltzer was not included in that. But your office went against our language that was passed and I believe signed by the governor, then we extended it. Could you elaborate on that? What's going on?
Thank you for that. Be glad to, yes, I appreciate the opportunity to clarify. First, we were, you know, we've been very busy with the implementation of the bottle bill, modernization bill that passed in twenty twenty-one. The, I believe the issue that you've raised, you know, we, we've been striving to make sure that our implementation is transparent, that there's transparency. And so for that purpose, we put out a document on our website with our understanding and expectations in terms of what, with the expansion of the bottle bill to new types of containers, what is covered and what's not. And so I think in some ways, so, so what that, we heard immediate feedback from some entities around some concerns of whether we had misinterpreted the bill. We did consult with the Attorney General's Office and I think that they were in alignment with, you know, concurred with our interpretation on that the statutory language refers to malt-based business beverages. But there, what we, I had, we had not realized is that there was some legislative language on the floor in both chambers that spoke to the distinction between malt-based and spirit-based and how those should be handled. So the plain language of the statute, if you didn't, if you didn't know about that, or if you weren't, you know, aware of the significance of the legislative history, you know, the, the plain, the statutory language is plain, right? But the intent was there. And so anyway, the point is, we appreciate, you know, folks bringing it to our attention. We've reached out to stakeholders, you know, immediately after we heard about the concerns. We are looking to, we can exercise enforcement discretion to not enforce. And I think that that's the, you know, an immediate step that we can put in place while we look forward to engaging with the legislature on, you know, amendment or clarification of that language accession that will help ensure that the plain language is also consistent with what the, the intention was as well. But certainly we're, it's, it's not a substantive disagreement about the inclusion of the, you know, what's included, but it's just a matter of, you know, making sure that, that we have the language in the statute that conforms with, with what the expectations are. So, you know, so we are, you know, happy to follow up with anyone who has additional questions and concerns. And obviously, we've talked with, we'll be talking with the Environment Committee to see what the best way would be to seek that update or clarification of the language.
I think that was asked, the intent on the floor was to make, make it clear that they were not included. And I think your office knew that. That's what, the reason I'm asking that because that was, that's, wasn't my bill, but it was, was the intent of the legislature was actually in plain language. And it was also stated on the floor, at least in the House, I don't know about the Senate, that the hard seltzers were not included. I think your office took it upon itself to include them. So will you take that, you know, we send this now or, I don't think it has to come back to us, really.
There is no intention from DEEP to go against the legislative intent. We were not, I was not aware of that legislative intent. So had, had we, you know, so there's, there's no sort of motivation here to try to go against it. It's really just, and again, I'm a recovering attorney, so I shouldn't even say this, but my understanding is that, you know, first step is you look at the language and if, if the language is clear in the statute, then that's what you implement. If it's unclear, then you go to the legislative intent. At least our consultation with the AG's office kind of confirmed in that two-step process, we couldn't go look at the legislative intent and then have that override plain language of the statute. But whichever, how, you know, that's the path forward that we're focused on. You know, hopefully, opportunities like this are helpful for, for all of us to kind of make clear where we're trying to head to. And hopefully we'll have that opportunity to be on something to the governor's desk that will cement that into the general statutes as well.
I appreciate that. And then two more questions and I'm done. I mean, I really appreciate your, your answers. We have the tire recycling we've had for years in the state, but now with the EV batteries we discussed this Friday, what are we going? We really don't have a plan, do we? Or do we right now?
We, we do not have a specific plan, but I will say that this is something we've had some discussions about within the agency. Look, I think this is one of the real benefits of the merger that occurred in twenty eleven of Energy and Environment Under One Roof is that we have a materials management team working on, you know, lifecycle stewardship of, of hard-to-recycle materials. And we have our energy team that's working on things like, you know, EV deployments and, and battery storage systems and so on and so forth. So we've had some early discussions about how to bring those things together. There, obviously with the shortage of critical minerals across, across the globe, it's really important that we find, make sure that we put the programs in place now to, you know, are there decommissioning plans? Have we, in the funding for behind-the-meter, you know, battery programs or for EV deployments? Have we included provisions to make sure that when the battery reaches the end of its useful life, that there, there's funding to be able to decommission it and then recycle it? We've also got a great tracker, as you mentioned, with extended producer responsibility programs that put the onus on manufacturers or those commercial entities involved in deployment to then have provisions for the stewardship of those, of those resources. The good news is that because of the shortage of critical facilities, you know, I think this is something where the, the commodity price and the scrap value of those batteries is going to be high, which will make the economics of recycling, you know, even more attractive. In addition, there's federal funding that we're pursuing that will help that to establish battery recycling facilities and support those. And I've brought this up with some of my fellow environment commissioners in New England about what we could do to work together to try to attract some of that, that business onshore that to the Northeast or to New England, which would really, you know, boost, you know, proximate access to those recycling facilities. So I hope to, well, not be back before this committee to talk about it, but perhaps in energy. Perhaps in energy and technology or in environment, this is something that we could um work together on and and have some more progress to show. Um so I'm glad you raised the question.
I'm guessing an entrepreneur will eventually come up with a way to make money from it, but recycle also. I appreciate your answers. Hopefully Hydro Quebec is up and running for us soon. I don't know how much longer we get that energy, which. Maybe will stem some of the, you know, problems we have with natural gas. But I thank you for answering all the questions and thank you for the indulgence, Mr. Chair and the committee.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Representative. We have Senator Looney followed by Representative Godfrey and Representative Nuccio.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Senator.
And congratulations on your your renomination. A couple of questions. Back earlier in your testimony, you spoke about uh the closing down of of Mira last July, and obviously that's going to be an. A longstanding and expensive problem uh to deal with. Eight hundred and fifty thousand tons of solid waste being having to be disposed of some other way. Uh but also in in terms of the ultimate end of that process, um there is very little developable land. Available in the city of Hartford. That is a prime, prime parcel. And one of the challenges that our cities have, New Haven, Hartford, and Bridgeport in particular, that. Uh they are small in area. They have the same challenges that urban areas have all over the state, but they have. Lack of space for development. So within Hartford, the Mira parcel and probably the the Brainerd Airport parcel are the two biggest. Uh locations that they have with the potential for development for the city. How long do you think it'll be before the city of Hartford might be able to get control of that Mira site for development purposes?
Well, thank you for that question, and and certainly that's something that um I know we we've been thinking a lot and and obviously talking with Mayor Bronin, but but certainly. Mayor Ellicker and others, I mean, this is a this is a a critical challenge for supporting the vitality of our. Of our capital city and our cities across the state and our, you know, I'm proud about the work that we've been able to support um with our brownfields. Uh team and our remediation team, I think, modernizing the Transfer Act uh to shift to a release-based system. Um and capturing more federal funding for brownfield remediation is is really going to help catalyze. On the return of a lot of of our contaminated sites um in our cities back to uh the productive use. Um and eager to continue to work with the General Assembly on that. To the specific question of how long. So I think um I'm hopeful that we'll be able to um work in partnership with the legislature to get some transformative legislation forward that will. Provide for some deadlines and timelines um for the um first off, the stewardship of the. Reserves um that that the Mira Board has control over to prioritize that for these cleanup responsibilities. Um provide for more predictable roles in terms of um the responsibility to clean up. Obviously, there's a the the. Then, you know, the next pieces of of the puzzle, of course, depend on how contaminated the site is. Um and so uh moving quickly to uh not just conclude the decommissioning process, but then. Um do the site characterization necessary to identify the scope of the contamination. And the extent of what the cleanup um will be required and the cost to do so will really help to um provide a a more. Fine-grained and accurate answer to your question. Um I think that then the the next big question is uh what? Is the future of that site? What kind of use um would the community, you know, and would the state um pursue for that? And and of course, how much you need to clean up um will uh determine. Uh or sorry, what what you, the ultimate end use will have a a big impact on on how much the cleanup needs to uh occur. If it's continuing as an industrial site, obviously less cleanup. If it's a daycare, you know, very significant substantial cleanup. So. Um I I hope that, but I think, you know, you look across some of these facilities, I think of English Station. Um in New Haven, it's it's the time that it takes. Sometimes it's not necessarily the cleanup and the shovels in the ground. It's really how long does it take to get the parties together, um identify the funding sources, right? Um and a clear, you know, leadership commitment and responsibility um and momentum towards driving towards cleanup. Um that sometimes is the process, the part of the process that can take years. And so I'm hopeful that, and I know I'm talking with the governor, you know, working with our sister agencies, I think this is something we could make. Tremendous progress on with the legislature this year, set some uh a firm process for how to fund the cleanup and a timeline. Uh and deadlines for taking those critical milestones to get to that process.
Thank you, thank you. Also, um some have said in the wake of the uh. Uh Russia's invasion of of Ukraine and the upheaval that that's caused in in terms of of energy and supplies of natural gas and the rest of. Some commentators are saying that that uh everyone has to rethink their, the timetable on their commitment to. Uh to renewable energy uh because of that, obviously in parts of Europe, they're having to reopen. Uh long-closed coal plants and uh and thinking about um how they're going to deal with the supply issue and the volatility of. Of uh what's going to replace the uh the natural gas coming from Russia. What what do you think of of the globally? In other words, uh. Are are our timetables for our our plan uh likely to be affected by how soon we can. Uh reach our 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 percent of renewable energy goal, given uh the unforeseeability of the the length of the of the war in the Ukraine?
Um so Senator, I think that um, you know, in in my view. We're in this situation now and will be in this situation indefinitely. Um so long as we continue with our energy dependence, our dependence on, you know, fossil fuels that are subject to these geopolitical. Um kind of price spikes and and uh weaponization of of fossil energy supplies, if you will. Uh and, you know, sadly, I think the, you know, so long as the war in Ukraine is continuing, I think we have. We continue to be particularly exposed to these challenges. So I think to to my view, the the challenge, the best option is to actually expedite. Um steps towards energy independence um to help uh ice, you know, insulate uh our our state and our region. Um from these geopolitical events, which we have been historically uniquely exposed to vis a vis, you know, in comparison to other states in the US. Because we have so long, you know, for so long been importing fossil fuels into our region to um keep our grid reliable. So um the other reason to expedite um this move towards energy independence is because of the. Um unique opportunity that we have to compete for federal funding. Um that is, you know, also that window is open for a certain period of time. Um and uh and and the faster that we can move towards um advancing projects and applications to our federal partners. The greater chance that we have to um secure, you know, lower costs or to reduce the cost. Um to rate pairs in New England and to Connecticut um for those energy resources. So. Um, you know, for those reasons, we're really kind of expediting um this investment in clean energy resources to. Uh hasten our move um towards energy independence. Um I think the other, you know, challenge that we face, of course, is is not just these geopolitical events. But also climate, the acceleration of climate change and extreme weather. Uh we saw over, you know, just uh on Christmas Eve. Um not just the New England grid on facing some challenges, but actually the Midwest, um Texas, Tennessee. Uh this, you know, the Southeast, we're experiencing really unusual weather events that were. Uh driving, you know, really challenges in energy availability and and the ability and and, you know, we saw rotating. You know, blackouts happening in in those parts of the country. And that's because of the collapse of the jet stream. Uh because we can have these tremendous swings in temperatures that are really driving demand in these different ways. And that too is um, you know, speaks to the importance of accelerating investments in clean energy and rapidly decarbonizing. Um so that we can help to, you know, forestall some of the worst impacts of climate change that are also stressing the reliability of our grid. So two great reasons for. Working harder and faster um to be able to deploy clean energy with, you know, the advent of uh federal funding to make it cheaper than ever.
Thank you. Just one last question. Uh in our uh climate change bill last year, that was a joint product of the. The Energy Committee and and the Environment Committee, one of the components was uh giving more incentives for the purchase of electric vehicles and. Uh and hybrid vehicles. Uh what I hear from my constituents is there's a certainly a growing interest in that option. The one thing that I think is holding us back. Rather, two things holding us back from a great leap forward there is the uh the so-called range anxiety that people are still concerned about. Will I be able to? Uh to get uh access to a conveniently located uh charge when I need one. Uh and the second is the length of time it takes to actually charge. People are used to pulling into a gas station and. Being on their way again in in less than ten minutes. And there there is some concern about the length of time it takes to get a charge. I think if. If those two issues were to be satisfactorily addressed, I think we'd see a a huge leap forward. Uh in the in the purchase of electric vehicles because people are, they recognize the environmental benefit, but uh they are still to some extent. Skittish about or hamstrung about the uh the convenience factor and uh not wanting to be early adapters until. Um uh all of their questions are 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 satisfied in the level of convenience and access. So just your thoughts on 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 that. When do you think we will? Reach the level of comfort in society that people will be willing to say, you know, I'm not going to have to uh really change my my pattern of of. Uh all that life, all that much to accommodate having an electric vehicle.
Um I appreciate that question. I think that uh the um the the unprecedented funding for the bipartisan infrastructure law for DOT to build out those uh. Those chargers that are along the transportation corridors is going to be really, really helpful. Um for, you know, topping off on a on a long trip. I think of the General Assembly actually is a perfect kind of microcosm, you know, when you think about the kinds of trips. That um senators and representatives are taking to get across the state on a daily basis, you know, you're really um at the cusp as as of um of of. Or or maybe the the best test case of users to benefit um from those chargers that will be deployed across across our transportation arteries. Uh but um, you know, I uh I will say that it was explained to me that charging your EV is a lot. Um less like, you know, filling up at a gas station with a traditional car and more like um charging your your iPhone, right? And I'm actually kind of the worst person, so I always forget to plug in at night, but but it's really what you should be doing. It's just when you get home at night, you want to plug in. Um and so you can top off your battery overnight. The beauty of that is that Pura has put in place, and I really applaud the leadership of Chairman Gillette. And our Pura Commissioners in in putting in place a program that will enable um cost uh residents to get access to um. Lower-cost chargers at home to facilitate that overnight charging as well as managed charging, so that the utilities will be able to. Um turn on and turn off your charging and sort of like manage it to to minimize the amount of draw. Um from the get or optimize for the amount of power drawn from the grid um overnight. So so that's really the best solution. Um for addressing um range anxiety and also lessening the time that it takes uh to charge. But I know the DOT is working hard to make sure that we have, you know, those fast chargers available, um working with our tran- uh tran- uh transportation, but you know, the plazas. Um along the highways provide for that. Um tho- those are critical pieces. I think the other big aspect and um of. Addressing range anxiety, of course, is also recognizing that many people don't own a home. Um we have a high concentration of renters, especially in the cities. Um and so I applaud the support from the legislature on the right to charge provisions to ensure that uh renters and condo owners who want to install a charger. Would lessen the barriers for them to be able to have access to do so. We're also been working hard on funding um to, you know, to provide for um public charging. In uh those communities that have a high percentage of renters. Uh we have some amazing entrepreneurs, uh and a manufacturer. Um EVSE LLC just up in South Windsor, um that has uh innovated a a type of charger that can be installed on your utility pole. With the press of a button, it can drop down the the cord and they're exporting, you know, shipping these all across the country. Uh which is really exciting to see. Those are the kinds of um installs that will really help to provide access, easy access. Um in those communities where you don't have a lot of uh individual homeowners. And then um in addition to that. Uh really appreciate the support from the General Assembly in the Connecticut Clean Air Act last year to provide for more equity. Um in the cheaper funding and the rebates that we're providing. So now we're able to provide a income-sensitive rebate. Um for uh for EVs. Um so that will help address the affordability gap that we hear from a lot of folks. Um who are who are interested in purchasing EVs as well as the incentives for e-bikes. Uh which has all the also been really popular in some of our city centers.
Uh thank you with your indulgence, Mr. Chair. One more question again. Again, at that bill, that the climate change bill, obviously with the the uh. Transportation Committee heavily involved in that, as well as uh the work of the Environment Committee and input from the Energy Committee as well. Just a uh one, one final question is what do you see being the uh the continuing role? Uh and the future role of nuclear power in our in our mix of. Uh our mix of of sources of 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 power. In other words, we have Millstone. What's the future of Millstone? What might be the future of any other additional nuclear nuclear options? And uh. Because that question, I think, is also pivotal to to planning our future and also our our sort of allocation of where we're going to be getting our power from.
Thank you for that question, Senator. The best option for Connecticut and for the New England grid is to see our. Um nuclear facilities continue to operate as long as possible. Um the uh we used to have eight nuclear reactors in New England. Now we're down to three. Millstone has two of them and there's one more in New Hampshire. Connecticut is supporting contracts with all uh with that uh the Millstone facility and. A small amount of the output from the Seabrook um facility. We know that entering into those contracts. Um has come at so a a some, a bit of a price premium on the contracts themselves, but it's helped us to avoid two billion dollars. In replacement costs that would be necessary if the Millstone facility had shut down. Plus increased risk for rolling blackouts because of it would have greatly exacerbated our reliance on on natural gas in the wintertime. Um and uh and a twenty five percent increase in greenhouse gas emissions that we would have experienced, not just in Connecticut, but across all of New England had Millstone shut down. So when we did our last integrated resource plan, that plan I mentioned a few minutes ago that we issued in twenty one, twenty twenty one. You know, we we did extensive modeling of the New England grid, the paths to achieve a hundred percent zero carbon electric supply by twenty forty. Uh what's the most affordable, reliable way to do that? And every single time the computer sped out, keep your nukes running. And so. Um and so I'm really proud that, you know, while we've seen other, you know, states and countries kind of um uh, you know, waiver in their commitment to nuclear. Connecticut has been strong on this the entire time. The New England states are really benefiting um from that leadership in Connecticut. The Millstone facility uh units are at, will reach sixty years. Uh that have their sixtieth birthdays on um in twenty thirty-five and twenty forty-five because there's two reactors licensed at different times. And so I think the next um big topic ahead is uh, you know, supporting Dominion in their um pursuit of relicensing of those facilities. We've seen other. Nuclear reactors around the country have received licenses to continue operating into their eightieth year. Um and that would be the best outcome uh for uh Connecticut and for the New England region if that were to do so. So I think we'll be watching carefully to see. You know, what um what will be necessary to support on the extension of of those uh of those licenses. One thing that we have been um uh I think has not gotten a lot of attention here in the state, but something we've been very engaged on in DC. Um is that the Inflation Reduction Act included a production tax credit for nuclear. And so we advocated um in August, uh we're able to get some changes to the IRA language to make sure. That states that had already acted before the Inflation Reduction Act was passed to prevent our facilities nukes from going down. Would not be cut out of the benefits of that um production tax credit will help, which will help to insulate um against uh, you know. Um i- if the price of energy goes way down, you know, help help to take out some of that bottom risk um that has challenged the economics of nuclear. Uh so those are some things that we're focused on, but the the short line, the the short answer is, as far as nuclear goes, we we need them to live long and prosper if we're going to reach our goals.
Uh thank you, Commissioner, and uh thank you for your service to this point, and we look forward to the to to your next term and and uh productive advocacy.
Thank you, Senator.
Uh thank you, Senator Representative Godfrey, followed by Rep Nuccio, who's on Zoom, Senator Martin, Senator Hartley, and Rep Rusko.
It's a long morning. Congratulations, Commissioner. I'm delighted that you've been renominated. I share Representative Yaccarino's concerns uh about, yes, we need to go to more electric vehicles. But where's the electricity going to come from? And um. Yes, we must. Wean ourselves off of fossil fuels, obviously, and we've got good policy in place and there's a question of the timeline now. Um but we've talked about um hydro. We've talked about wind power. We've talked about solar. And I've been slightly disappointed. We haven't heard more about fuel cells. Now, I admit it's a little parochial. I've got a big fuel cell headquarters in Danbury, which is where I'm from. I've worked with Representative Cook up in Torrington, Representative Del Nicky, the three of us have been very much. Uh on in favor of using that. For those who may not know, you burn hydrogen. And um and your waste product is hydrogen oxide, otherwise known as water. Uh pretty safe. It doesn't pollute anything. It comes out pretty clean. But how can we increase? Uh and why shouldn't or why shouldn't we increase uh the use of fuel cells? As the price of them has come down as they become more and more, uh you know, the the economies of scale that economists like to talk about. Uh where can, where would you like to go? Where would the um department like to go? And and how can we help?
Thank you for that, Representative, and and actually um I I think that uh the. Ki- ki- it's not a parochial interest, or at least if it is, it's it's a Connecticut interest. We have, we're really proud to have. Um this uh uh the head would be the, you know, kind of the hometown uh home state of of some tremendous. Uh fuel cell manufacturers and companies that have been leading in this in this important techn- that have been leading in this, in this important technology for years. Uh, we're all, I think, one of the only states that has, uh, fuel cells included in, in the class one tier for our renewable portfolio standard, for example. And I've been really, you know, proud of the work that we've done to support, um, fuel cell installations for resilience, for providing for backup power to avoid the need to rely on diesel, you know, backup generation, for example, for some of our major employers that have large facilities. Um, uh, it's an option for backup for data centers, you know? So we've, we've worked on a lot of different, um, applications for fuel cells over the years. But the one that I'm most excited about is what you just mentioned, which is the, um, the, the use of, uh, fuel cells in a hydrogen economy. The bipartisan infrastructure law included a, um, $8 billion, uh, authorization for the Department of Energy to provide or to establish hydrogen hubs across the country. And I'm really, um, pleased that, um, our deep team was able to work, um, in partnership with New York and New Jersey and, uh, many of the other New England states to submit a concept, um, for a hydrogen hub in the Northeast, which, um, I, I expect would include, um, opportunities for expansion, um, for many of the, uh, fuel cell uh, companies and technologies that are located here in the state. And because you mentioned electric vehicles, I will say that the one part of, you know, um, our, uh, decarbonization of the transportation sector that is the, the most concerning from an energy supply perspective is long distance, uh, trucking. And that's really what the focus of our hydrogen hub application of the Department of Energy was on, is how we, we can produce hydrogen with green resources such as offshore wind, utilizing fuel cells or, you know, for the electrolyzing, uh, and production of the hydrogen, and then, um, deploy it, uh, to, uh, for hydrogen for, um, long distance transportation, uh, knowing that we're in a very dense, you know, in the Northeast, we have a lot of shared transportation corridors and opp- and opportunities. So that's just one of, um, many applications that we're considering, uh, as part of our hydrogen hub. We're, we submitted the concept and the good news is, uh, between the holidays, we got, um, uh, some good, uh, a positive report back from the DOE. They, um, green lighted our concept paper to advance to a an application. Uh, so we'll be, um, I believe the deadline for that will be in April. You have, you can kind of get a glimpse of, uh, how hard our team has been working to pursue these federal funding opportunities, but we'd be glad to partner with many fuel cell, um, companies who are part of that, uh, regional hydrogen hub process, and we'll keep our fingers crossed for a good result.
Thank, thank you so much. I'm, I'm heartened by, uh, by your response certainly, because I just, I just, it's, it's a, technology is more than emerging now because it's been around for, for quite some time. And I just think it has, uh, future potential, um, to help us out to, uh, get, get off of, uh, fossil fuels. I've even seen some of the R and D done on, uh, fuel cell cars. Not quite there yet, but I'm hoping sometime in the not-too-distant future that, that it is, because, uh, certainly going to EV cars. And, and let me just add to Senator Looney's list of why I don't think, uh, why, why I don't think people are embracing them so much. He raised a couple of very good points. They're too expensive. And I know the state of Connecticut has nothing to do with the market. That's another thing that as time goes on, they'll become, they'll become less expensive. I'm an urban legislator. There's no one in my district who can afford a $40,000 or $50,000 car. We're, we're in the 15 to $20,000, uh, car range. So that's just an, another obstacle that, uh, that we have in converting to, uh, uh, more electric vehicles. I'd like to switch a little bit to some more Western Connecticut issues, uh, both energy and environment. Lake Candlewood, which has been called facetiously the world's largest liquid battery. It's, it's, uh, uh, the, um, every source uses, it's not every source, the, the owner uses, uh, excess electricity in the middle of the night to pump water out of the Housatana River into the lake. And then during the day, during peak hours especially, it goes the other way and, and drives electricity. We're happy to continue that. That's, that's, that's certainly a renewable resource. It's, it's water power. It is hydroelectric. But as you know, in the other half of, of your department, the environment side, we've been having a huge problem with mill foil. Came up with a wonderful solution. We have sterile carp. And sadly, they've not only eaten all of the mill foil, they've eaten everything else. And we're now worried that, um, we're gonna, we're, we're creating a dead sea in the middle of, in the middle of, uh, Western Connecticut because the oxygenation from the plants isn't there anymore. Any idea where we're, we're going to be able to go? This, it's been talked about quite a lot in my part of the world.
I think you've really highlighted, um, it, it, this is sort of like a day in the life of this job, because where you have energy environment sort of under one roof, there is never a, you know, you can see all of the different follow-on complexities of some of the solutions that you might, you know, sound good in one silo, but may contribute to, um, other, uh, challenges in another realm. And so, um, you know, we're working with, uh, the Angling community to, um, see if there's more we can do there to help, uh, reduce the carp, um, population. Um, but it's certainly one of those that, you know, um, we, we treasure Candlewood. It's, it's an amazing resource for all of the different, you know, energy, tourism, economic development, um, habitat, and so on and so forth. And so, um, you know, working closely with the community there, I think that's one of the, um, near-term solutions that we're looking to accelerate. But certainly, um, these are, these are, it's just emblematic of, of, you know, anyone with a silver bullet, uh, they may be understating some of the, you know, the complexities of, of deploying single solutions, so.
Maybe a silver trident, but that's inappropriate.
We'd be glad to follow up.
It's not so bad right now, but is, when spring comes, as it inevitably does, it's going to be a, a huge problem. I don't want, uh, every, I don't want to kill off the carp and everything else because the water isn't oxygenated. It's, it's one of the things that keeps me awake at night. So, uh, speaking of Lake Candlewood, Squants Pond State Park. I'm suspecting there'll be legislation put in that I will not support to, um, constrict the use of Squants Pond State Park. There is a real problem in New Fairfield in that the parking lot isn't big enough and people are parking on town streets and then walking or even Ubering, uh, to the park. And, and of course, happily, uh, we only charge for parking. We don't charge for an, an entrance fee. There was an attempt to make changes like that before your, I think while you were still a PURA, so, and which we had to kill on the regs Review Committee, then Senator Schlossberg and I kind of teamed up to, to put, to put, uh, an, an end to that. But I'm hoping that we can work together to come up with solutions that both help the traffic problem, uh, in the town of New Fairfield, but keep the park open. It may be just expanding the parking lot. I, I don't know. I haven't done an awful lot of research, but I'm looking forward to working with you, uh, and others on that.
I've found that, um, and, and this is really, uh, hard, you know, hardwired from our pandemic response period, that the best solutions are usually the ones that you work out, you know, with the local first selectmen, local delegation, kind of customizing and, and sort of figuring out what will, what are the best levers to pull to address these issues. You know, we have treasured parks, but they're very popular and especially, uh, uh, you know, in those hot summer days, and we're getting more of those because of climate change. We see a lot of influx, especially to Squants, and this is no, you know, this is not new, um, from folks coming in from out of state and as well as the local community. And, and that's our mission to support, you know, a safe, um, experience for all. We've focused in years past on, um, more, how to get the word out about closures and capacity impacts, um, how to advise people that, you know, when we see, we can tell from the weather forecasts when we're going to have a, a packed weekend, you know, how to, how to help people find alternate places to recreate, as well as working closely with local law enforcement to address some of those issues of parking outside the parks. It can be really dangerous from a public safety perspective of people walking in. But I, I do, um, feel, and I think, um, in the nature of your question, the best tool, the best thing for us to do is to have the flexibility to be able to come up with the solutions, um, that work effectively, without trying to create, you know, sometimes when you create too strict of a framework, it can have unintended consequences, um, in, in terms of the implementation. And so, uh, but those, that it, having the flexibility only works if we have strong collaboration, communication and partnership with our local, our local government, uh, representatives. And so be glad to follow up with you, um, offline, um, on, you know, on, on, uh, how we can, uh, collaborate even more, um, on those issues. I think Squants is closed currently. It's typically about 10 days a year that it reaches capacity. When it does, it's really, you know, can be very intense. And so, um, but, but glad to continue, you know, to some dialogue on, on what we can do more there.
Thank, thank you so much for that. I'm, uh, looking forward to working with you. Senator Schlossberg had the same prop, when, when this was proposed, it would have effectively closed Silver Sands, which doesn't have a fence around it. So, so that is kind of the derivation, uh, of, of, of our concern. And, um, Squants is the shallower end. So not only does it close, uh, too often per capacity, but bacteria in the water as things get warmer, uh, has also been a continuing problem. And then on, on top of it all, the, the town of New Fairfield doesn't have a police department. Uh, the law enforcement there is, is resident state troopers. So it, it, it just adds complications to the, uh, the debate and the discussion. Looking forward to working with you. Congratulations again. Thank you for your service. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Representative.
All right. We have, uh, Representative Nuccio, followed by Senator Martin, Senator Hartley, and Representative Cresco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and good, uh, good day to you, Commissioner. Um, congratulations on your, you're being put forward again. I do have a few questions for you. Um, hopefully not that long, but just pretty specific. You spoke earlier, um, about the need to try to find additional, um, ways to handle our waste and recycling. And I'm wondering what options we're looking at from a state perspective on, as you mentioned, the 20-something percent that is, um, compostable, compostable material. And, um, that kind of cycles into my second question, which is we recently passed legislation to kind of promote the anaerobic digesters. And I was thrilled to read that the anaerobic digester in one of my neighboring towns in Coventry is actually providing, um, electricity to, I'm sorry, it's provide an energy source to New Britain. And I'm wondering what we're looking to do to try to expand that technology, um, what your office is looking to do to kind of partner between the compostable materials and the anaerobic digesters to create a new form of, um, energy that we can use in the state.
Thank you so much for that question. It's something that I'm really passionate about and I, um, I think this is our, one of the biggest opportunities that we have, uh, to address our waste crisis is, is in, um, scaling up the availability of convenient and affordable, uh, um, organics collection, whether it's, you know, curbside compost collection, um, or transfer station drop-off programs, you know? It's about 500,000 tons per year of organic material, uh, that's going to, uh, or that, that's in our waste stream. If you think about it, that's roughly what, uh, the amount of municipal solid waste that MIRA was handling right before it closed. So, um, you know, and currently we're only diverting about 11,000 of that 500,000 tons of food scraps to digesters and other facilities around the state. We have amazing entrepreneurs and developers who've been working hard over the last couple of years to build out more capacity to process on these materials, whether it's the Quantum Biopower Commercial AD Facility in Southington. Or, um, just last fall, I cut the ribbon at a new, uh, business in Berlin that is taking up to 450 tons per day of food scraps and converting it into an animal feed byproduct. Smart Feed is the name of that, uh, uh, facility, done it all with private funding. So there's a lot of opportunity there. And then on-farm anaerobic digestion also, um, we've seen a lot of projects moving forward. And, uh, and that's helping to address nutrient management solutions for our agricultural sector. So there's a lot going on. And I'll, I'll say, uh, uh, behind all of that, um, our, uh, environmental quality, uh, depart, um, branch has been working hard to streamline the permitting process for anaerobic digesters. So, um, happy to, to share some of the successes we've had there. Now I think that the, to your question, the biggest, um, challenge ahead or opportunity, um, is for us to build out the programs that will get the food scraps from the kitchen, from the restaurant, from the cafeteria to those facilities that entrepreneurs and developers are investing in. That's the missing link is having those collection programs in place. So I really want to say kudos to the General Assembly and to the governor who supported a $10 million in surplus funding over the last two budget cycles that enabled us to establish, uh, the Sustainable Materials Management Grant Program. We've awarded 15 grants, um, in this past cycle to municipalities that are implementing, uh, innovative approaches to curbside collection, uh, with a $40,000 grant, um, this time last year in Meriden, for example. Uh, we were able to support a private hauler there, um, that offered a co-collection program, uh, with different colored bags, um, to residents, green bag to put your food scraps in, orange bag for your trash. You could put it in the same trash cart. And, uh, and that enables the, the hauler to not have to run a separate, um, refuse truck, uh, collection route to pick up the, the, uh, organics. So very cost effective. That pilot, we think we captured 25% of the food scraps in the thousand household participation, um, over a four-month period, which is a really promising start. So, um, we're seeing many other, are proud to be able to support other municipalities that are putting those programs in place. We'd love to really scale up that kind of grant support for municipalities and for haulers, um, who can implement, um, solutions to get those really valuable, uh, that kind of black gold of, of food scraps, um, out of the waste stream. I think that's one of the most cost-effective among many, um, solutions that we need to move forward to help rebalance, uh, or regain self-sufficiency and minimize our reliance on other states for processing our municipal solid waste.
So that's all good to hear. Um, I'm wondering though, what we're doing to kind of get this information out there? Because, um, being involved in town politics for a long time, I know we had a, a period of time where we were actually, recycling was a revenue generator. And now it's a significant cost for, um, for the towns. So if there's ways, like what is the state doing to actually proactively go out there and find more areas where we could put anaerobic digesters and then trying to partner with the towns around it to develop a compost-type, um, program where they could work with grants and that to get the material from the towns to the anaerobic digesters that need them?
Well, in the next, uh, week or so, I expect DEEP is going to be, um, announcing a, a draft of our, uh, updated materials management strategy to kind of lay out this opportunity, um, really for stakeholders and legislators and municipal leaders and how, um, important and val- and valuable this, this opportunity for organics diversion, among other solutions will be. We're, uh, the Sustainable Materials Management Grants have enabled us to not only support these pilots, but also, um, we've had a couple of COGS that we've funded who are, um, bringing on, uh, technical assistance and staffing resources to help with the education and marketing around these opportunities to, uh, to engage communities, uh, that want to start up these pilots on what the opportunities are there. We also have the Recycle CT, uh, effort that we are partnering with haulers and others on. We've supported grants, um, in schools for composting. I find is the mother of three. But that's a really, really.
It's a big one.
Hey, to get the word out.
Those kids don't want the apples. They don't want them.
But they'll come home and tell you, you know, hey, mom, dad, like, we shouldn't be putting apples in the garbage. This is what we do at school. And it's a really great vehicle for, for getting the word out. But I, but I'll say, when we issued the grant program, the request for proposals for municipalities, we were way oversubscribed. There were so many municipalities that wanted, um, to sign up to get that funding. We weren't able to fund all the towns that wanted to step forward. So one thing that we hope to work with the legislature on this year is a way to provide for permanent and, um, increased funding for those grants, which could help, uh, cover the cost of the startup, uh, uh, phase for curbside collection programs, but also the, the, um, help people, uh, municipalities and COGS and regional waste authorities fund recycling coordinators and staff and, and folks who can do that education piece. It's, it's incredibly valuable and, and it, and we won't be successful in starting up these programs without it.
Then the, the ha- second half of that question is I recently spent some time, um, in Washington State and I, they, I got to talking to somebody in, in a, like an organizational environment there. And they were talking about the recycling program that they have in their state, which is recycling of their own products and then turning it into, of course, like garbage cans and a bunch of other stuff. But they seem to have a really successful program. And as I mentioned, I know in Connecticut where we've seen a kind of a flip where the recyclables are now a major cost driver, um, in town expenses. So I'm wondering, is the state looking at, um, some advanced technologies, some ways to recoup our own recycling, process it in the state and reuse it within our municipalities and such, that would help kind of offset the cost that the towns are seeing now from a recycling perspective? Or if not, then Or if not, then what is the plan that we're hoping to engage to handle recyclables in our environment?
Representative, the, the policy that we're most excited about that would fit that description is extended producer responsibility for packaging. We expect that, so extended producer responsibilities have a long history in Connecticut. We have EPR for tires now, sorry, gas cylinders, for mattresses, paint, electronic waste. These are programs that simply shift from municipalities and taxpayers to manufacturers, the cost of managing for the collection and the recycling and disposal of their materials. And as packaging has become a growing share of our municipal solid waste stream, just think about the number of Amazon boxes you may have broken down over the holiday season. We think that this is a, a, a policy that could have a lot of promise here. And we've seen many states across the country now taking up this policy for packaging EPR. We've been working with our sister states and with brand owners to develop a model, a piece of legislation that could be implemented to achieve this. It would achieve, if we had packaging EPR enacted here in Connecticut, we expect we would be able to reduce or divert about 190,000 tons per year of recyclable materials from the waste stream and save municipalities $50 million per year in annual costs. And so it will have, that, that is one of the most cost effective solutions that we could put in place. I think it will also result in ensuring that those, those materials, that packaging can be more easily repurposed into new containers, new, a new valuable materials. And I think that's one of the reasons that branders have been coming to the table to work with us on this policy, which would require legislation. And so we hope this is something we'll have more dialogue on with the General Assembly this year.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is around something that I'm pretty passionate about. And I'm, I've been working with your area and DPH and a couple of other areas and not really to having a whole lot of success with it. But something that has come up that I think is going to be a rather significant issue for Connecticut and we're starting to see it grow. And it has also been recognized now at a federal level is the emerging contaminant of road salt. I have several, I've got almost 100, I would say less than 100, but around 100 homes in one of my towns that have contaminated wells. And deep has done year plus surveys on how it's happening or what's happening. Town, the towns are looking at it. DPH is looking at it. Our Eastern Highland Health District is looking at it. Everybody's looking at it. Everybody's tested it. Everybody's gotten it. But nobody wants to come to a conclusion on what it is. And as we've seen in other states, there's definitely indications that road salt is the major contributor to this contamination. The 2007 report that was published, that was kind of the driver for the state of Connecticut, switching from a sand salt mix to the straight sand or the potassium chloride, sodium chloride, blue stuff that we see on the roads, put through a lot of assertions that with the environment that this salt would be weeded through the soil, the dirt and all that and be filtered before it actually hit aquifers. I live in the northeast corner of the state. We don't really have public water. We have a lot of wells and a lot of septic. Very limited public water comes out our areas. And that's pretty much the entire, like the northwest and the northeast corners of the state. And we're seeing high levels of homes now with massive salt contamination to the point that there's no potable water. I've got residents who for seven years have not had potable water, who are constantly replacing pipes and appliances and furnaces whose children have rashes from taking baths, who we've had a dog die from kidney failure. We've had so many different things that have shown that this salt is a health issue. It's also a life issue because water is life. And if you don't have water, you really don't have a lot to start your base from. I've seen a lot of finger pointing and a lot of, you know, we can't narrow it down to this or narrow it down to that. But we've also started to see that people are coming on board with the fact that this 2007 report was flawed and did not give the right information. So I'm asking, A, what is the commitment of the state to help these towns? Just one neighborhood in my district is going to cost about $18 million to try to get public water to. That's not something that the town can afford or that the local taxpayers should really have to pony up in this case because of the road salt. But more importantly, from an environmental perspective, what are we doing to try to find an environmentally friendly alternative to putting sodium chloride on the roads, which we know are rotting cars. They're rotting our state DOT trucks and stuff, which means faster replacement. They're rotting pipes there. It's clearly not good for the environment, but it's something that we've continued to pursue. I'm pretty passionate about us trying to find an alternative in something that is environmentally friendly, but I'm even more passionate about the fact that I have residents who don't have potable water. And I'm looking for some sort of commitment from deep that this is going to be a high priority coming up, that this is something that we're going to look to tackle and make right for people. So I'm wondering if you can give me any feedback on that at this time?
Well, thank you, Representative. I know that we've been participating in a, the road salt working group with DPH and Yukon and DOT. And obviously this is an issue that sits at the nexus of public health and transportation safety and and of course impacts the water supplier or something that deep is closely engaged on. But you have my commitment that I'll be glad to, you know, work with you and, and, and follow up on what the next steps are here and how we can be of assistance. Certainly, you know, we are a, a state that's really unique in terms of our population density, you know, but also the reliance that we have on natural water sources for our drinking water. It's, it's one of the things that makes Connecticut kind of unique relative to other states in New England and the Northeast, especially in our rural communities where many folks are drinking, they're drinking waters from private wells. This makes issues of contamination especially critical for us to address, whether it's PFAS or, or from road salt and so on. And so I'll be, I, but you, you certainly have my pledge to meet and follow up to see how deep can be a part and working with our other agencies and our flagship university to pursue some, some consensus and solutions here.
I appreciate that. And I would just ask, ma'am, I know when I asked about the road salt commission that I had told it hadn't met and had been disbarred or disbanded. Sorry, not disbarred, disbanded. Cause I was trying to get on it and I don't know if that's the case, or if there's anybody that we can get clarifying information from, but I definitely think this is something that is going to become a larger issue for our residents since we've been using this sodium on the roads now for as long as like 15 years now. And we're starting to see this contamination. I think we're going to start to see it spread. And I'd like to kind of get a, a hand on it before it gets, before it becomes our next crumbling foundation. So thank you very much for your input in that. I appreciate you answering my questions and I look forward to listening to everybody else's.
Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you. Next, we have Senator Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations on your nomination once again. I represent, you know, about, I live in a town that's about 60,000 people. And I've raised four children in, in a home for 26 years. And now I live in a different home with my wife and myself. My question is regarding is the black bear population. In 26 years, you know, we live less than a quarter mile away from a school, elementary school. We had black bears multiple times. And, you know, for those that know a little bit, anything about land, land development, you know, the, I lived on a 25,000 square foot lot. So it's less, you know, a little less than an acre or around a half an acre. So, um, multiple sightings, my neighbors as well. That's on one part of the town. The other part of town are 10, 10,000 square feet. I get a call two years ago from someone from the east part of town and telling me about their visitation from a black bear. I represent Plymouth, Harlington, Tomston. There has been a multiple pieces of legislation year after year asking for bear hunting to be allowed. I currently live on another part, still on the western part of Bristol. And I had a black bear visit us there as well and come right up to the patio door and say hello, so to speak. What are the recommendations of the, of deep of managing the, the population growth of the black bear?
Um, well, Senator, I'm glad you asked this question because I think this is one of the, one of the topics that as I thought through the last four years that I've had the privilege to serve as Commissioner, I think each year has brought increasing work, you know, and, and issues that we've been implementing at deep to be able to manage the expanding number of conflicts on that we're seeing in our state between bears and people. We are blessed in this state to have amazing bear habitat as part of the regrowth of our forests from a century ago. And we've seen the return of black bears. You know, in 1999, it was, you know, very rare. I would say, you know, we had no reports of any seeing any sightings of, of sows with cubs, for example. And now it's very commonplace. The population has expanded significantly. We, and, and, and I think that that's something that, you know, a lot of people are very excited about. They're beautiful creatures. And, and we're, we're, you know, it's a wonderful thing to have a thriving population of wildlife. But at the same time, we have a lot of people that are living in bear habitat and in, and, and folks in neighborhoods across our state are seeing now bears where they hadn't seen bears before. And so our challenge and our agency has been to help ensure that we can keep bears safe and keep people safe. And to manage what, to me, has been a very concerning increase in conflicts between people and bears. And what do I mean by conflicts? I mean, we're seeing a significant increase in the number of farmers that are seeing damage to crops and depredation of livestock. We're seeing this year a very dramatic increase in the number of bears entering homes, topping 70 home entries this year. We're seeing a very significant increase in reports of, of, of wildlife, you know, coming into backyards, encountering people. And of course, and, and then last fall, we had a, a child who was, who was injured by a bear. These are circumstances that are going to become more frequent is what I'm afraid unless we have a broader portfolio of management tools to address the bear population. So first starts with education. We are working hard to, we've provided a lot of guidelines on the, our website about how to live safely with bears. One of the most important practices for, is for people to reduce the exposure to food sources. Taking in your bird feeders, managing your, you know, your grill, your, your trash, you know, things that could be attractants to bears to increase habituation. We've also been working hard to, you know, respond to these incidents. We have very limited staff of, of wildlife biologists or in con officers. And unfortunately, I think the frequency of these conflicts is now to a level that, you know, is very difficult for us to respond effectively to all of the instances that we're experiencing. We've been, you know, trying to engage with, with folks, you know, in the media and other public spokespeople because certainly there's a lot of public interest and when people see, you know, a bear at a backyard birthday party or a bear in a hammock or a bear in a pool. But unfortunately, those, those, the way sometimes those instances are, are described can kind of lead to kind of, you know, giving people a false sense of security or around these wild animals that can be unpredictable. And when we lose that sense of respect for wildlife, then that can also contribute to increased frequency of habituation and public safety challenges. So, you know, I think this is something that we need to hopefully work with the legislature on. I, I, I will say Connecticut is in a very unique position. We have, we're the only state in the Northeast. It does not authorize bear hunting. New Jersey was like us, not, did not allow it, but recently Governor Murphy reinstated bear hunting in New Jersey, in, in part because of the public safety concerns and the significant increase in human bear conflicts. Just to give you another statistic, we have, we estimate our population is about 1,200 bears. Massachusetts has about 4,500, four times the number that we do, but Massachusetts has fewer conflicts than we see here in the state. And so it's something that we, you know, we hope to be able to bring our experience of, of our wildlife biologists and our, and our staff who are responding to these issues to share and shed some light on practices and tools that we think would benefit both keeping bears and people safe and tools that would help our, our, our agency better respond to these circumstances. But look forward to, you know, working with the legislature on that this year.
I don't recall what year Senator Minor had been talking about this in our caucus. And I don't recall it, it was last session, two years ago, three, four years ago. But he mentioned that deep had a plan for, to allow bear hunting and to use Litchfield as sort of the, the starting point of managing allowing hunting in order to, in that geographic area to start the process of managing the population. Your thoughts on, on that?
Um, I think if I'm recalling correctly, I believe Senator Minor introduced in 2019, a bill in the Environment Committee that would have authorized a bear hunt in Litchfield County. And I testified in support of that bill. And so, you know, and I, I think that continues to be our position that I think among a complement of, you know, education, adequate staffing, addressing intentional feeding, banning on intentional feeding, better tools for, to address agricultural damage. We also, you know, deep is supportive and the administration is supportive of, 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 of an approach similar to what Senator Minor had, had introduced in 2019. Our, our position hasn't changed there.
Thank you. I think the objective for those that are advocates of the, of the allowing bear hunting to take place is regarding the safety of the public. So hopefully this session, we might be able to, you know, bring some, some, a bill that will take care of part of this issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Hartley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to the Exec Noms Committee and to all our returning colleagues. And Commissioner, it's been a long morning for you. So I'll try to be very brief. Maybe I'm the last one on the queue here. I'm not sure. But thank you for your incredible testimony this morning, but also for your leadership over these past four years. I, there have been a number of challenges. I think the department has met them head on. And, you know, we've got, you know, our pain points here. We recognize them and we've got to continue to be creative and innovative, one of which is, you know, on the business side. So we've talked a lot this morning about energy and how that is playing out in terms of our rate payers, one of which is also our business community. So, and we, you know, sometimes it's like watching the paint dry. So what would you say to the business community to offer them some hope in real time, recognizing that their, their model is to plan and also long-term plan and, and about reliability is what they're looking for. We're at this moment in, in our economy where the state quite frankly, has never been before. And companies as well as families are looking at Connecticut in a new way. I will tell you though, that one of, you know, the big items that jumps out on both levels is this energy situation. I know you're recently visiting with Sea Cat and to talk about the embracing of technology in, in relation with the Department for efficiencies. Briefly, can you respond?
Great. Yes, thank you. And I know that this is something that Commissioner Dom, Commissioner Lehman before her, we talked incessantly about how access to affordable, but also reliable and clean energy is an important part of business attraction and business retention for the state of Connecticut, including, including, you know, with these most recent price spikes that we've been experiencing. You know, being able to provide for award winning energy efficiency programs. Those are critical, not only for our residents to be able to take better control of and lowering their energy costs, but also for businesses, everything from the nail salon to the larger manufacturer. We have tailored programs administered through the utilities as part of the Conservation and Load Management Program that are helping those companies take advantage of of lowering their energy costs. We're excited that with the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act that there's now a significant amount of tax credits that are available. Both production tax credits to secure access to rooftop solar, which can be a bill reducer as well as other tax credits and rebates that folks can take advantage of to, again, support lower cost energy efficiency measures. And we're proud to be able to work with businesses to help them assist them with that. We've also engaged a lot with the Connecticut Industrial Electric Consumers with CBIA and others. As deep appears in PURA proceedings, we engage with them as other parties to think through are there strategies that we can advocate for, things that we can work together on to, you know, present to PURA as part of PURA's regulation of distribution rates. Many businesses, you know, are, while the the recent headlines have really focused on the increase in the standard service generation rate that the utilities provide for residential customers, most business customers are on competitive supply offers. And so, you know, we've been working with them and talking with them about how they can take advantage of the deregulated system and more competition in retail rates to secure a more attractive attractive rates. And of course, our partnership with the Green Bank with other, as well as with the energy efficiency programs. There's amazing progress that's happened over the last decade in helping businesses take advantage of solar, taking advantage of now battery storage programs that PURA has implemented with with legislative support, fuel cells for backup generation. There's customized solutions available for businesses of lots of different sizes. But it's really, really critical while we have high rates, right, to that that may be nation leading, that our our actual bills can be much lower because of the efficiency of our utilization of energy. And that's what we're really trying to work with businesses to strive for. In addition to that, I think what you see happening today is is a real focus, especially from the Biden administration and reflected here in Connecticut on enhancing business competitive competitiveness through seeking to onshore a lot of manufacturing opportunities and 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 clean tech opportunities to the United States, and I hope more to New England and to Connecticut. There's an enormous opportunity, whether it's from the to help businesses grow and expand and deliver on climate and decarbonization and clean energy solutions. That can be a source of economic growth for our state. Everything from the energy efficiency contractors that we've worked tirelessly with during the pandemic to find, ensure that they could continue to deliver energy efficiency services, you know, even with the disruptions of the of the pandemic to working with fuel cell industry, working with our aerospace partners to think about how hydrogen and sustainable aviation fuels can be an economic opportunity, working with some of the new tech incubators that are getting established through Connecticut invasions. I know CCAT has been a leader in this space. We want to see that our commitments to a clean and reliable grid can also be growth opportunities for companies here in the state. And so that's something I'm eager to be working with Commissioner Dom on as well as the legislature, you know, going forward.
Yes, thank you very, Commissioner. You know, you're absolutely right. And it is we are at this time when there is an opportunity for reshoring with everything that's going on with supply chain. And I I don't want to miss this moment. And so the department is so instrumental in in being part of this economic development scaling up. So I I really appreciate, you know, your presence and leadership in this sector. Having said that, though, recognizing also that Deep was one of the agencies, many were, but Deep certainly slammed with this, you know, twenty twenty two retirement phenomenon. And so with that, I can want to ask on another issue, and that is and and so in view of that, and we've had a lot of work going on. And by the way, kudos to your leadership again and and the department on this transition from, you know where I'm going here. From the Transfer Act to to the release base. But do you envision now at this point in time, where we are, all the work that's been done on this, that the LEPs, the Licensed Environmental Professionals, will be more empowered to help take, you know, up some of the slack from the department, but also to begin to move this initiative. And then I I also would like your thumbnail, if you could share for the committee, you know, where you see us going to public notice on moving those regulations to finally get to release base so that we get that target off our back. You talk about New Jersey with the bears. Yeah, it was now Connecticut, New Jersey on this transfer act, and we've got to get that moniker off of our our headline.
I'm so glad you you mentioned that and really kudos to you, Senator Hartley, and to Senator Martin and the Chairs of Environment and, you know, Commerce, who stewarded that groundbreaking legislation to help us have a path to be able to sunset the Transfer Act. That was no small task. And and I actually, I think it has a, it's going to have a lasting impact. To the your prior question, one of the things that Commissioner Lehman always would say to me is like one of our big limiters, you know, energy costs is a challenge for business attraction, but also having suitable sites right in a dense state for businesses to be able to locate and build new facilities is also a big bottleneck for us. So being able to move towards a release based system and join the the modern world and the other, you know, forty eight states in the country is job number one through the so we have been working hard with the working group that was established in the legislation. It is on my list, my very short list of things that I hope to be, you know, accomplished in twenty twenty three is that we will be out to notice and have regs moving forward to the regs Review Committee on Release Base this year. But we want to, you know, it's been very, it's been an important balance of making sure that we're getting, you know, the right progress and and marching forward, but also taking into account all of the different feedback from from stakeholders who've given us thousands of, you know, hours of uncompensated volunteer, you know, input to get these regs drafted in just the right way, including the LEPs who are really critical to our ability as a public private partnership to be able to shift to a release based program while still, you know, within the footprint of our of our existing staffing. We have the through the, so that's where the retirement cliff, I think, also matters a lot. We saw the departure of many staff, veteran staff over the last few years. I'll just give you some numbers. We're we're authorized at nine hundred and twenty four positions. We are currently at eight hundred and thirty four positions filled. But eighty three are in process, either in recruitment or we have an offer out and waiting, you know, to onboard a new a new hire. Our, we were heading into, you know, January last year. We saw we had about three hundred and fifty of our nine hundred employees who were retirement eligible, at least by the book. But only a hundred and sixty of those actually retired during the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two years. And we hired a hundred and forty three new people in twenty twenty two, which is I, it's got to be unprecedented. So we've seen an amazing amount of new talent coming in. And this is why we were so motivated to sunset, to get that legislation, to be able to sunset the Transfract. I I just, it really sticks with me when one of our senior staffers who knew he was going to be retiring, you know, kind of raised this up is could we try to engage the legislature on this? Is this the year to do it? So he said, I'm going to be going. And we're going to be bringing in all these new people. And do we either want to bring in new people to train them in positions to do like just track commercial transactions, which is not really our bailiwick? Or do we want to hire people in who have environmental science backgrounds who can actually focus on reviewing those high impact? You know, high consequence cleanups, right? And it was very clear that being able to have the legislative support to to have a clear path towards sunsetting the Transfract is part of our succession planning. And that we've been working with this hiring and and and, you know, who and and how we're structuring that division based on the this expectation that this year we will be advancing those regs forward and and finally moving to a release based system. So really passionate and excited about that and appreciate all of the communication collaboration we've had with your you and your office on this.
Yeah, so there's a lot of people, there's a lot of pent up anticipation here to kind of, you know, get past this milestone here. And so we're anxious about it for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is that, you know, we will have thousands of properties that will be begin to move. Once again, it ties into where we are in in terms of, you know, economic opportunities in the state of Connecticut and continuing to grow our tax base. So so important and and thank you for the team that have devoted, yeah, the thousands and thousands of hours of this. We're twenty four months plus on this whole thing. So it will be a happy day. And I'm counting on twenty three this year.
We'll we'll get it done. We got spill reporting done.
Yeah.
I remember you nudging us along on that one and 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 that was really exciting and it's the same kind of relentless spirit. We'll we'll get this one through as well. So I appreciate your support.
But thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Gresko has his virtual hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question about the rehiring of individuals at Deep was just answered, so I'm good to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Yakarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the second time. I I don't mean, I don't mean to be a pain, Commissioner, but I want to go back to the bottom bill. What something triggered? What made your office go to the AG when I would think you would come right to the legislature? We passed it. I believe it was signed into law. What was your thinking? Why didn't you just come to the body that passed it?
Oh, we were asked that same question that you had asked right after we put out the guidance, if I've got this time sequence right, so subject to check, but you know, we got that question of like the statute's plain, why did or the statute says this, but why didn't you? Why did you put out the guidance saying that if the legislative intent, right, that, you know, didn't you take into account the legislative intent? So we just wanted to make sure that you know, we're always, we work very closely with the AG's office and we just want to make sure that our attorneys were on the same page, you know, we had some fresh eyes from the AG's office, look at it and see if they disagreed with our our interpretation. And so I think the answer back was that, informally at least, was that they didn't disagree with that interpretation, but it was not to end run or second guess the legislature's just to make sure that we were, you know, just to have another opinion.
So we'll go back to the the intent of the legislation.
Sorry.
We'll go back to the intent of the legislation that we passed.
I think that I it's our hope that we can go back to, that we can go forward to that. But our understanding from the attorneys is that the way that the statutory interpretation works is that we don't have the ability to disregard the plain language.
Right.
If the statute is not ambiguous, then it's then we don't have the discretion to sort of throw out the statutory language and rely on the legislative intent. We can only rely on the legislative intent if the statute was unclear. But again, I'm not the attorney here, so we're we're excited to like work to get this clarified. There's no dispute or disagreement with the policy. It's just a matter of what the, how 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 the legislation is crafted, right? And and how we can provide, our goal is to provide as much clarity for folks as as soon as we can. And and at present state, my understanding is, you know, the best path and perhaps the only path for us to do that really definitively is is through a legislative amendment, but glad to follow up offline.
Yeah, I don't, I I don't think we needed an amendment because we actually passed it. It was clear, it was in in plain language and was sent to the governor. So I I think we don't agree. I I don't serve either committee, but I do remember the debate and I do remember the exact intent to get that bill over the hurdle was to exclude the the malt and the hard seltzers.
Right.
I'm not advocating for either way, but the fact is that's what it was. So I'm advocating what we passed. That's that's all. I don't mean to be a pain, but we did pass it. And my concern always is if a commissioner of a department, we pass something, we don't want them to do something that there's a reason we pass it. There's a reason you do what you do.
I take that very, very seriously, sir. And I and I just want to, again, like it wasn't an agency bill.
Right.
And so this was not a policy that we disagreed with or had a preference around. My hope is never to be in these situations of of, you know, implementing something that the legislature wasn't on board with. It's just simply, I think, from a legal perspective, our the advice we've been given is that we can't disregard the plain language if it is unambiguous. But perhaps this is one we can bring some some lawyers to a table. And if there's a different understanding of what our discretion is, happy to hear it because our goal is really to just address the issue and and be able to move forward, not to prolong a policy disagreement of any kind.
Yeah, I I personally don't think we need to go there. I think we need to go back to the intent. And I don't want to beat it, keep beating this, but the fact is we did, we had an intent. It was passed and it was negotiated on and in good faith, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from committee members? I don't see any hands up virtually. So Commissioner, thank you for spending your entire morning with us. But before you go, there is one question we ask of every nominee. Is there anything in your past that you believe might prove embarrassing to this committee, to the governor, to the state of Connecticut?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your day. All right, moving on. We have the second item of today's public hearing agenda. It's item number two, House Resolution for Review, the renomination of Amy Porter of Coventry to be Commissioner of Aging Disability Services. Good afternoon, Amy. Commissioner, I should say, if you can do me the favor, do me a favor and please raise your right hand. Do you promise swearing affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much. The floor is yours. If you can just turn up.
Thank you so much. Representative Concepcion, Senator Duff, Senator Kelly, Representative Yakarino, and distinguished members of the Executive and Legislative Nominations Committee. My name is Amy Porter, and I am so pleased to be considered for reappointment to the position of Commissioner for the Department of Aging and Disability Services. I look forward to the opportunity to build on our state's commitment to older adults and people with disabilities and the opportunity to continue to work alongside the incredible team that I have at Aging and Disability Services and our partners. I want to start by thanking Governor Lamont for nominating me to continue as Commissioner of this great agency. I'm honored by his support. I also want to thank the legislature for your ongoing support of our mission and all those we serve. In partnership, we've shaped a strong aging and disability infrastructure, and I look forward to continuing this work. And I want to thank the committee for the opportunity to talk this afternoon about our agency, about our mission, and about how we've evolved, particularly in the wake of the global pandemic. So our department, Aging and Disability Services, our mission is to maximize opportunities for the independence and well being of people with disabilities and older adults in Connecticut. We deliver integrated aging and disability services that we hope are responsive to the needs of Connecticut citizens. And we focus on the areas of employment, education, independent living, accessibility and advocacy. When I was in front of you last time, we had recently brought aging services into our agency. We started as a disability agency. The legislature put aging services in with our agency. And really, over the past four years, I think we've done a great job successfully integrating aging and disability services, looking at what the functional need is for individuals regardless of age and trying to meet those those needs. Our goal is to provide leadership to serve as a resource and to advocate for the rights of Connecticut citizens with disabilities and older adults. We had a lot of things happen in the pandemic. We, you know, working with people with disabilities and older adults, there's a lot of significant impact from the pandemic. There were issues around workforce. There were in issues around access to food and nutrition, home delivered meals. Folks that went to congregate sites could no longer do that. So addressing a lot of those areas, addressing the the challenges that we had in our long term care facilities. So we have an incredible team that has worked incredibly hard through the pandemic to make sure that those needs are met. And and we've learned a lot along the way. I think we're starting to really focus now on how do we make sure we're bridging the digital divide? How do we make sure that we're creating access in ways that everybody can can access workforce, community, whatever else people want to be able to to access and creating the structures available to do that. So our next term, if if I have the opportunity to lead, we're going to be focusing on things like really strategically, including people with disabilities and older adults in our overall workforce efforts. I'm part of the Governor's Workforce Council. And so trying to make sure that those access issues are addressed upfront and not later on in the process. Ensuring that folks have access to computers, to the internet, to the whole digital equity piece, so that we're increasing workforce opportunities, but also reducing Increasing workforce opportunities, but also reducing social isolation and any other impacts that that folks are facing. And also making sure that our long term care services and support system, both in. Facilities and in the community, making sure that it's responsive, making sure that we're protecting the rights of individuals with disabilities and older adults. So those are some of the things we'll be focusing on moving forward. I had a lot of great opportunities during COVID to. Work outside of human services. We have a lot of really strong relationships in our human services agencies, but I had the opportunity to sort of. Step out and work with the entire unified command structure, the entire executive branch, and it's an amazing group of people. And we learned a lot during that. We learned a lot about how to how to connect with communities, how to make sure that the folks that we work with continue to get those services. So. I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you might have, and I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and congratulations on your on your renomination.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. You led the department through. The transition that expanded the the reach of of the office, which you mentioned during your 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 testimony. You know, what challenges and opportunities have you seen going through something like that? That is a it's a critical piece here in the state of Connecticut?
Yeah, so we were created as an agency back in 2011, and I I have been fortunate to be Commissioner since January of 2012. And then we added aging services. And so over the last. Five years or so, we've been able to successfully integrate the the aging services piece. And I I don't think we. We saw it as an incredible opportunity to be able to look at those functional needs to to understand, you know, somebody might be facing challenges with hearing or vision or mobility. They might be. Facing access issues in the community and regardless of age, we're able to address some of those some of those challenges. So. A lot of it was helping people understand that 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 those functional needs really are the same. It doesn't matter what the disability label is. It doesn't matter what the age is. And now I think we are taking the opportunity to really. To really work across our individual programs to make sure that our folks who work with somebody who's older and blind is connected with our assistive technology program and is assisted. Connected to our area agencies on aging so that it's a seamless process for the individual.
Thank you. And you know, similar question that Senator Hartley asked Commissioner Dykes, and you and I had the pleasure of meeting last last week, and you had mentioned to me that. You know, the shortage of staff is is an issue that needs to be addressed in your in your department. So I guess my question is, you know, what are what are some of the the? The policies that that you will. Implement to try to address some of those staff shortages?
Yeah, thank you. We we definitely had a number of retirements. We had more than 60 retirements in our department. Along with other folks moving to to opportunities. And we've really had to stop and think about what are the critical refills? What are the things we need to tackle first? And we've spent some time really thinking about what are the positions that we need moving forward? It's not a one for one refill. It's not, let's just, you know, let's just take these these 10 positions and make sure we replace them with exactly the same position. It's about. Understanding what the needs are because things really have changed for the folks that we're here to support. So trying to really think about the accessibility, thinking about the digital divide, making sure that we have people who can. Address those needs as well, deal with nutrition issues. So we've been prioritizing our. Refills and making sure we get the most critical ones first.
In my last question, and you you touched upon this a little bit during your your testimony, but if you can expand a little bit on your short term and long term priorities for the department.
Sure. Yeah, we, you know, our our short term priority is is ensuring that we. Were able to refill the positions and get, you know, our our staff did such incredible work and they. They need the bench to come in. They are they're tired, but they're still incredibly committed, and we just want to make sure that we bring new folks, new energy. And make sure that we're able to to really equalize the work a little bit. So that's that's a big short term goal for us. And then a little bit longer term are are some of the pieces that I talked about, really strategic integration of workforce efforts. We have a number of programs for individuals with disabilities, going back to competitive integrated employment. And we want to make sure that they're they're part of the pipeline, you know, as we start to think about what the structures are in our governor's workforce council, as we work with leaders in industry, as we we look at what are the emerging. Jobs and fields out there. How how do we make sure that individuals with disabilities are part of that workforce moving forward and not a a separate? A separate entry into the workforce system. So. And older adults, the same way people are working longer, we want to make sure that we're supporting those folks and they become part of those pipelines. Digital equity, there's a lot of focus on that here in Connecticut. So making sure that we that. We're advocating for people with disabilities and older adults in that digital equity process, making sure people have the access that they need so that they're able to thrive moving forward. And then looking at our state's long term care services and supports and making sure we have the right structures, people have the right the right supports. We have the state long term care ombudsman program under our agency. So we have the long term care skilled nursing facilities, assisted living and residential care homes that that office deals with. And then the legislature also wanted us to look at a community ombudsman role. So really. Thinking through that, getting input from the legislature, from the community, from the industry, from residents. Who are receiving those services in the community and better understanding it. Those are probably some of our key goals moving forward.
Great. Thank you so much for being here. That's all I have. I'll open it up to committee members. Representative Yakarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very brief. It was really a pleasure meeting you and listening to you and discussing issues with you last week in the building here. I don't have a lot of questions because Commissioner really asked them, but. Really, one question, I guess, is for your communication. For senior centers or disability homes, sounds like you have a strong communication. With those folks, which to help our our people in need is elaborate a little or?
Yeah, thank you for the question. We we try to connect with our partners. Our state unit on aging has a listserv, so they put out a ton of information on a regular basis. To senior centers to, you know, individuals can sign up for the the listserv communities. We also started particularly during the pandemic. We we have a liaison who works with the senior centers, but particularly during the pandemic. I tried to jump in those calls to better understand. You know, the senior centers were really grappling with the 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 change. They wanted to be available to older adults. They had to rapidly change the way they. Provided services. So trying to listen to the senior centers, making sure we understand what their understood their needs. Making sure we could support them as they thought about reopening and what that looked like. So jumping into organizational calls for. Senior centers, for adult day centers, working with our area agencies on aging, and then. On the disability side, really listening to the independent living centers and and what their needs are. So I think there's a lot of a lot of ways to to do the communication, but for us, it's really trying to connect with the groups who are. Providing those services directly.
Thank you for your answer. I was just really impressed and I wish you the best. I think you'll do well. It really helps all our people in need and you and your department and all the people that work with you. And for our people with disabilities and aging, I want to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative.
Chair.
Senator Looney, followed by Senator Hartley and Rep. Arnone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Congratulations on your renomination. One question, just in terms of of planning for the future needs of the agency in order to to meet its responsibility, what? How are you dealing with the the likely growing increase every single year in the number of people eligible for your services? The baby boom generation is the largest ever. In our nation, we have all of those people born between 1946 and 56, say, who are rapidly aging. Many of them are still robust, many are not, but. Increasingly, there will be a large number of frail elderly, and that number is growing every year. So what what is what's your planning mechanism? To try to make sure that that your department is is up to the task of dealing with the volume that you're likely to have in coming years?
Right. That's a great question. Thank you so much. And and definitely, there's a growing population. So we're required, we we get about 75% of our funds for our agency. From the federal government. So the administration on community living is where we get most of our funding for older adults. We are required through the administration on community living to do a state plan on aging every four years. And so we do a pretty robust planning process. We go out to communities. We. We connect with older adults themselves. And then we also fund our area agencies on aging based on a formula and. The area agencies on aging also need to do area plans to to be able to support that statewide plan. So they're looking at those demographics. They're trying to understand the changing needs. And right now we have some additional dollars, you know, we have ourpa dollars directly through the legislature, and we also have. Some additional funding that we've gotten directly from the administration on community living, and some of that will help us really understand what the needs are moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Senator Hartley, followed by Rep. Arnone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, and congratulations, Commissioner, and thank you for being with us this morning. I I just wanted to actually talk about a process thing. But in in the in the agency. And so. The legislature finishes its budget, adopts the budget, you know, certainly by the close. Always were hopeful for that of our our legislative session, and sometimes we haven't made that, but we have more recently. And and I'm just referring to a more recent budget. So that's your blueprint, is it not, going forward? And and so then I'm just curious how then on a process. Level, it takes six months to. Implement those directives, if you will, the the blueprint that you're given.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's a great question. And we did have, we did have one instance where there was something in that was in the budget. That. We needed to get out the door. It was something that was outside of our standard, sort of our standard. Way of getting funding. We have funding for nutrition services, but that typically goes out to our area agencies on aging. So. This was something that was a little bit out of the ordinary for us, and at the same time, we lost our fiscal manager. So I I don't. We needed to get that money out the door. So I know what you're referring to. It was it. It's a very clear instance to me because I I have been working on it recently to make sure that we get it out the door, and we have. Done that. We've gotten an agreement in place, but I appreciate your advocacy because I know it's something that. Your advocacy raised the awareness for us, and we were able to check on it and then make sure that we could get a. Get an agreement in place between the provider and our agency and get that signed. So that that piece is done. The funding should go out the door, but. There it should have been out earlier than than it was.
Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, the personnel challenges that everybody has had, and clearly you've had them in your agency too. It's just that as the clock ticks and particularly, you know, on a food program for a senior center, you know. It was it was really important. So I I it. This is atypical is what you're telling me. It's.
It is. Yes, it is atypical. It was something that was outside of our process. It was missed, and I take full responsibility for that. We had changes in our in our personnel, but it is something that, as you said, our budget is our blueprint. It's something that we should have seen. We should have caught it, and your advocacy raised the awareness and we were able to address it. So I do appreciate that. But yes, it is atypical for our agency. We pride ourselves on. On trying to get things out out the door as quickly as we can. There's always steps in the process, but we are that that was atypical for us.
Okay, thanks. I I do appreciate, yeah. Your attention to that. And I feel a lot better that, you know, on a regular basis, you know, there is a budget and that budget is implemented without, you know. Further exchange, if you will.
Right.
Yeah, thanks, madam.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Arnone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and. Happy to see you here today. And in Enfield, we have a regional senior center, and we handle a lot of issues over the years with mental health. So mental health and seniors, along with suicide rates of seniors, are usually don't make the evening news as much as they need to today to bring that awareness forward. We've worked with our social services department in our aging and through the senior center. To supply a social worker to our our seniors. So there's one there since X amount of time and days of the week to help with any mental health issues. Where do you where would you like to take that in your administration to a statewide, you know, awareness?
Yeah, thank you so much for for doing that and for for really advocating on behalf of the senior centers. They they do become a lifeline for people. And I think, you know, our goal is to continue to work. I mentioned that we have a very strong relationship with the other human service agencies, and we spend a lot of time together trying to understand each other's services. So. We can continue to work with with Demus, with DSS. And with our community partners, our the towns and the senior centers themselves to try to understand what those needs are and make sure that folks are getting what they need. The socialization that I mentioned earlier, we had all these congregate sites, and it was a place for people to go and and make connections. The home delivered meals are also a great opportunity for that. It's a check in, at least a a regular check in with the older adults. But it it doesn't always provide the level of socialization, and I think the more we can do to ramp up that socialization, make sure people are connected. We're going to continue to support senior centers. We're looking at a virtual platform for folks that are not able to get into the senior centers, but making sure that the senior centers can continue to offer the the flexible. Programming that they were able to do throughout the pandemic. They were so incredibly creative, and we want to do whatever we can to support that. So that's, I think that's the role of our agency is to make sure we can. Continue to support their good work.
And and thank you too for mentioning the congregate living centers too, because they're very important in our town too, for disabled too, although we have a disabled population that's living in and around those also. And they need your support. So thank you. And I I know we'll be looking forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Duff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations and good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
I don't really have too many questions. I just wanted to say thank you for for doing the work that you do. Working with seniors and and folks who are aging is. As we know, we have an aging population throughout our nation and through the state of Connecticut. Which requires a lot of work, a lot of priorities to try and meet all at the same time. And. I just actually got an email from Swaka from Murray Allen, I think coincidentally, maybe not. And talking about the respite program, which we fully, you know, I fully support as well, but the needs that are happening as as our residents get older and trying to have them age with dignity, as she always likes to say. So I just wanted to say thank you and any ways in which the legislature can be partners in that, and I'm sure we'll do everything we can with all of our competing interests. But to keep keep working and doing what you're doing and look forward to supporting your nomination. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments from committee members? Checking virtually to see if there's any hands up. Doesn't seem like there is. So before you go, there is one question we ask every nominee. Is there anything in your past that you believe might prove embarrassing to this committee, to the governor, to the state of Connecticut? Commissioner, thanks again for for being here with us today and congratulations again on your renomination.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving right along. Item number three. Which is a Senate resolution. It's the nomination of a renomination of Jeffrey Beckham of Tallinn to be Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Before you begin, if you can raise your right hand.
Do I stand for this?
Sure. Do you promise swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Wonderful. The floor is here, sir.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Senator Duff, Representative Concepcion, Senator Kelly, Representative Yakarino, distinguished members of the Executive and Legislative Nominations Committee. It's good to be back with you today. My name is Jeffrey Beckham, and I am privileged to serve as the Secretary of the Office. It's good to be back with you today. Uh, my name is Jeffrey Beckham and I am privileged to serve as the Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management. And I'm grateful to be renominated by Governor Lamont. I appreciate your consideration today. The Office of Policy and Management, I've got some uh, prepared remarks. I'll let you read those. I'm not going to read them to you, but the Office of Policy and Management, as you all know, functions as the governor's principal staff agency. Uh, plays a role, central role in state government. One of our more prominent responsibilities that we're probably most known for is the annual budget proposal that the governor makes and the implementation and execution of that budget uh, that we negotiate first with the General Assembly. And then we have to administer with our agencies, uh, but in the uh, period after the enactment of, of the budget. Uh, OPM provides the governor with a global overview of proposed policy initiatives. Uh, and it, we play a critical role in coordinating and leading inter-agency problem solving efforts among our uh, agencies. One of my um, goals and one of my uh, orientations about this job is that I think it's my job to support our agencies and help them get their missions accomplished. So uh, I became OPM Secretary last year, uh, at the end of February of last year. Prior to that, I'd served as Under-Secretary for Legislative Affairs, uh, for the first part of the Lamont administration. First term, I would, should say. Before that, I'd worked, uh, the Department of Administrative Services. This is my second stint at OPM. I was in OPM as an Under-Secretary for Legislative Affairs in the last three years of the Rell administration. Uh, before that, I was with what was then called the Department of Public Works, which is now part of the Department of Administrative Services. And before that, I was privileged to work for the General Assembly for fourteen years as an LCO attorney. Uh, covering the Environment Committee, the Commerce Committee, uh, one year the Energy Committee and five years uh, on the Finance Committee with Chairman Looney for part of that time. So it's a long time in state service. Before that, I was a temporary assistant clerk in the judicial branch. So I've had service in all three branches. My goal in this term is to carry out the governor's agenda and vision for the state. Uh, listen to ideas from members of the General Assembly. And to ensure that we're doing the right thing for the people that we are ultimately responsible to, the taxpayers of the state of Connecticut. We have a lot of work to accomplish in this session and I'm committed to working with the legislature in a thoughtful and collaborative manner. And I thank you for your consideration. I'm looking forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and congratulations on your uh, renomination. A couple of questions on, on my, my end. I, I represent a municipality that is a part of the, the municipality accountability review board that I believe you, you, you co-chair. And since its creation in, I want to say twenty seventeen. You know, in, in the, the six years it's been uh, here in, in the state of Connecticut, I'm just wondering, you know, what you think of the, the, the program, you know, any changes that, that you might want to see over the next uh, few years, whether it's the expansion of, of more uh, towns and municipalities going um, being a little bit having a oversight uh, by Marb.
Sure. Um, I am the chairman of the Municipal Accountability Review Board. Before towns get to the Municipal Accountability Review Board, we have something called the Municipal Finance Advisory Commission. If they start to get into financial trouble, they first come before that group uh, to begin to get a little oversight, a little assistance. Uh, we have, as you probably know, various tiers of oversight under the Marb. Uh, Hartford happens to be a tier three municipality. It's principally uh, in front of the Marb due to uh, the state's absorbing some debt uh, that the city had incurred a number of years ago. So we have them uh, in front of the Marb on a regular basis. I spend some time with Mayor Bronin and his staff, looking at their financials uh, every once in a while. We have the Town of Sprague as well, which is a tier three municipality. Probably about to emerge uh, from the Marb oversight. Their, their finances are getting better all the time. Uh, we also have a tier four municipality with increased oversight. That would be the city of West Haven. Uh, we have undertaken a recent uh, initiative there to uh, review their governance issues. And some of their uh, oversight and financial controls. And we expect to be working with them for some time to come, I think, to get uh, that city uh, back on track. So uh, we have a number of uh, measures to help our towns uh, stay uh, in a solvent position in terms of their finances and uh, uh, in terms of their governance and financial controls. I, I, at this point, I wouldn't, we just had a bill last year, I think, that modified the criteria by which towns get in front of the uh, MFAC. And then the M, MARB. Uh, so you've recently amended that statute uh, to clarify and rationalize some of those steps and what triggers that oversight. I'm, I'm happy enough uh, with where that is. We're gonna obviously take a look at that uh, as we continue to work with particularly West Haven, uh, see if we can get them to where we need them to be without further action by the General Assembly. But we know that that's always a possibility as well. If we can't get to where we need to with them, with our current authority, uh, I will be happy to come down the street and ask you guys for more authority uh, to deal with that situation. So that's where we are with the Marb.
Appreciate uh, those comments. Uh, earlier, uh, just the past um, nominee, I asked Commissioner Porter regarding some of the staffing issues that they have uh, at their department. I'm curious what OPM, uh, what role uh, OPM has in uh, trying to help some of the departments um, fill some of the vacancies that we have.
Yes, we, we are in, uh, as everyone knows by now, an historic tight labor market. There are a lot of uh, macroeconomic reasons for that. It's, it's not just state government. It's, it's for the private sector as well. It's other states. Uh, we just aren't having the people show up uh, looking for jobs as, in the numbers they did in the past. We've had some acute situations at our twenty-four seven facilities. Uh, and we've been working with some of our agencies on those issues. We, uh, several months ago, on our own motion at OPM, we uh, convened uh, uh, teams of inter-agency teams with our partners at DCF, Demus, DOC uh, and DDS who have twenty-four seven facilities that where there's some acute needs and where we uh, needed to make sure that we were staffing up. We've been meeting regularly uh, with our partners at DAS who also have done some extraordinary recruitment efforts this past year. Uh, it is, it is uh, very much on our minds all the time, the staffing. We, we don't have the staffing we think we need yet, but we are making every effort to fill all the positions necessary to deliver the services that, that the governor expects us to deliver. So we have been working intensively on that issue. We've worked through our Office of Labor Relations with some of our collective bargaining uh, partners to uh, cut some of the corners that the contracts would otherwise have us uh, go around in terms of hiring and the appeals and all that sort of thing that happens in the hiring process. We've gotten some cooperation from them and able to move things faster from that perspective. So we've been actively engaged in that issue. It's an acute issue for us. You'll probably see some legislation on that topic as well.
Thanks for that. I, I might have another question or two, but I'll, at this point, I'll open it up to the rest of the committee, uh, starting with uh, Chairman Duff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Secretary. Uh, glad to have you back. It did not, does not seem like it was that long ago that you were here in front of us.
It was on Zoom.
It was on Zoom, actually. That's right. And um, but uh, I know you received a good amount of support then, obviously, and I suspect uh, it'll be the same uh, going forward. It was, it's been a pleasure working with you so far, uh, through the budget negotiations and um, other initiatives uh, put forward uh, by both the legislature and the, and the governors uh, as well and, and through your work. Just a general sense of, you know, Connecticut's position right now uh, versus uh, well, our, our position from our standpoint. Uh, but also our position, I guess, comparative to some other uh, states around us or nationally. And I think we're in a very strong position. We have people moving in. Uh, we, we saw um, a lot of folks come in, uh, especially during the pandemic, where businesses moving in. Uh, we've seen our Wall Street ratings uh, go up. Um, and we have surpluses paying down pension debt. Uh, but it just kind of, from your perspective, that's my own biased view. But from your perspective, you know, how do you see us kind of short, medium and long term?
Uh, you're absolutely right. We've had a number of press releases and press conferences this year, uh, telling that story. That's been very good news. Uh, it's, it's a great time to be the Secretary of OPM. Uh, I've had colleagues who've uh, had more difficult times. Uh, I, I hope that it lasts. Uh, we are keeping an eye on the economy and what happens with our revenue. Uh, in fact, uh, you're gonna get some news this afternoon. Uh, our office of, is, is along with your office of Fiscal Analysis, putting out the January consensus revenue report this afternoon. I think at four o'clock. Uh, we've got some good news there uh, in terms of revenue for this year, current fiscal year, as well as the next two fiscal years. Uh, we are in a great position and uh, I, we want to keep it going. Uh, the governor wants to keep that going. He's spoken often about keeping those fiscal guardrails in place, the ones that you all enacted five years ago. They worked very well to get us into a better financial position. We also have to, um, my principal job in working on the budget is to balance the budget, to stay under all the relevant statutory caps and make sure we don't make our structural problems worse in the out years. That, uh, that latter piece is always a challenge. Uh, we, we still have a situation where our revenue uh, is not growing as fast as all of the budget's expenditures on a, on an annual going forward basis. We recently in our fiscal accountability report did report, and this is good news, that in two fiscal years upcoming, twenty-five and twenty-six, we expected the fixed cost growth, which is half the budget. It's not all of the budget. That will be below revenue for the first time in anyone's memory. That's very good news. But we still have the discretionary part of the budget, the budget that uh, is subject to annual appropriations, that's still growing very fast. And we have to, it's been our challenge in building this next biannual budget to try and get everything into underneath the, where the revenues are going to be. That's going to be our principal challenge, I think, with you all in the next couple of months. It's uh, balanced budget, staying under all the caps, adhering to the guardrails and making sure we don't make our structural problems in the out year uh, worse. So there's work to do. It's, it's very good news. But there's still some work to do. So I'm looking forward to that.
Right, thank you. And I, I want to just say that I think that we have uh, done a good job with our volatility cap. But I always credit Senator Fonfer for and putting that, you know, filling the rainy day fund and putting that money into paying down pension that, that was here long before most of us got here. Um, and that we are uh, responsibly dealing with at this point. But also I think that even current, more currently, uh, the ARPA money that we receive, we have been working hard uh, to spend that wisely as well. Uh, and I'll give you an example. One is, um, you know, I've talked, I've talked to some of my colleagues around the country over the weekend at a national conference of state legislatures meeting. And um, you know, talking about trying to get kids back and, back from the pandemic and back for their education. Uh, catch up a little bit and what we've done together on uh, free museums and childcare and uh, all sorts of uh, initiatives and to, to help uh, kids with that, with some of the uh, loss of learning that they had uh, during the pandemic. But also, you know, I was hearing from a colleague of mine uh, in South Carolina who was talking about how uh, Alabama used money to build uh, prisons. To private prisons. And I think that the values that we have here in Connecticut, uh, based on what I, the contrast of what we've did versus what they did is completely different. And that I'm proud of the fact of what we've done. So I think working together, uh, and we did that as a legislature and with, with the governor is, is something to be proud of. Um, so just from a standpoint of, um, you know, you alluded to the, to consensus revenues, but our fiscal health going forward. Uh, having that additional money and operating because of the pension debt that we pay down, I think is, has been very helpful and does give us some extra room um, that we hadn't had in the past. Would you agree with that?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, we're seeing eight X savings in the out years because of the pension uh, pay down, the deposits we've been able to make to the pension funds. Absolutely.
Yeah, great, thank you. Uh, I think that's all I have for now, uh, Mr. Chair, and I, I thank you, Mr. Secretary, for, for your time. Congratulations.
All right, uh, Representative Yaccarino, followed by Senator Looney, Senator Martin and Representative Gresko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Beck, for being here. Unfortunately, I can't vote for you. I wish I could. Uh, we did meet through Zoom via Zoom last February. And I think you are the right OPM Secretary at the right time. The governor, I was pleased for, for him to say at the, our opening day about the volatility cap, bond cap and spending cap. Keep that in place. And I hope, I just, you feel the same way, I'm sure.
Yes.
And with those provisions, we've, we've heard it's really paid down our short term and our long term liability. But we really can't keep our, you know, we can't take our eye off the ball with that.
I agree.
And then we have the DCF Commissioner, we, what we also need for, to help, I was pleased to hear you work with the commission, all the commissioners, because those agencies are vitally important and they do need funding. So it's a balancing act. Um, you know, keep taxes, keeping taxes lower, keep our government going, but also helping those agencies and uh, I don't know if you have any.
That's what we're hoping to do with the document we're gonna show you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. I really don't have any other questions because I, I feel very confident in you. I've done a lot of research and you, you've done, you spent many, many years in state government in a good way. You really helped a lot of people and, you know, it's both Republicans and Democrats and that's, that's the job of a, a public servant. So I want to thank you for that and keep up the fiscal responsibility. Try to keep taxes down if we could, but also provide services. It's a balance, balancing act, I know, but we, we could do it and we've done it and we're gonna continue to do it. Thank you. Looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Looney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Mr. Secretary.
Good afternoon, Senator.
And uh, we have known each other a long time, going back to when you were a LCO of the uh, Finance Committee, which I, I chaired with then uh, Representative Anne McDonald, um, the uh, the mother of our current Supreme Court Justice back in nineteen uh, nineteen ninety-nine and uh, two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand two. So uh, and you did a superb job as an LCO and in every capacity that you've uh, uh, served in since then. And congratulations on, on your nomination for a full term this time. One of the uh, things I wanted to, to ask first of all is um, what is, what's the deadline for spending the federal ARPA funds that we have? And, and how much do we have remaining overall in ARPA that is still uh, available for, and, and what's the deadline by which it has to be out the door?
Under the Treasury rules, we have to obligate the funds by the end of calendar twenty-four and expend them by the end of calendar twenty-six. We have, um, well, as you know, we officially allocated all the ARPA last year. But some of it was um, proving not to be uh, needed in all the areas. And at least one of the places where we put it, uh, there was some intent that it would be something that would be flexible for us. So there's probably a couple of hundred million there. Uh, the current surplus that we're reporting this afternoon of about a billion dollars still includes about three hundred fifteen million of ARPA in revenue replacement. So theoretically, um, one could make some choices about that. I don't want to say too much about our budget proposal, but there's, I, I've said to a few people, I think even to you the other day, that there's still some ARPA sloshing around. So we'll be able to program some of it, I think.
Right, so it has to be allocated by the end of calendar twenty-four and then actually uh,
Obligated.
I, I mean obligated, but then actually, actually expended or uh, by the end of twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
So during that time between twenty-four and twenty-six, um, is there an opportunity uh, to make changes? Will the feds allow us to uh, for something that's been obligated to uh, to uh, change that decision on obligating it and reallocate it to a different, in a different category in that in that two-year period, the end, that the end, after obligation and before, you know, final final spending? Or you're locked into what you obligated it for by the end of twenty-four?
Well, it depends. I, I assume it depends on how creative you are at arguing what the obligation was for.
Right, right.
Um, I think the short answer to your question is it depends. One thing we've done since we've received all this ARPA fund, funding is we've stood up a small unit at OPM that's uh, expert on Fed funds, including ARPA. So we'll be working with them on questions like that. Uh, let us know what you have in mind. If, if we get to the twenty-four session, say, and there's still something we want to do, we'll probably have to do some research and some discussion with Treasury and see what's possible. But uh, you know, we, uh, between the two branches, we're endlessly creative about that sort of thing. So uh,
Thanks. And, and you mentioned the, and the governor mentioned in his uh, uh, speech on opening day, the fiscal uh, guardrails. Um, uh, in your view, should they be regarded as a uh, uh, as a package? Are they all equally necessary or uh, are some more essential than others?
Well, they clearly are, are different, have different functions and different results, right? Uh, the volatility cap does provide a, an automatic deposit into the rainy day fund uh, per quarter as we hit those quarterly targets. The revenue cap is more of a uh, required savings account. As you go through the year, you can only expend a certain percentage of what uh, the projected revenues are. So those are slightly different and they're bigger numbers. Obviously, the volatility cap is a much bigger number than the revenue cap number. We have said that we believe they're all important. Um, I think the, I think that's the, the answer I'm gonna give you is that they're all important. And we should keep them.
Good, thank you. I, you know, I, I certainly agree regarding the, the volatility cap because that certainly addressed what had been a uh, a real Achilles heel in our budgeting for a number of years is that the our, our incapacity to, to accurately predict what that estimates and finals category of the income tax was going to bring in. Um, and uh, as I remember, there was one year where uh, uh, the then Department of Revenue Services Commissioner Sullivan pointed out that there was a year back in the, the early years of the Great Recession where the fifty largest taxpayers in the state had a net uh, drop of two hundred million in their income tax obligation of estimates and finals in a single year. That was an average of four million per person. And uh, that was the sort of thing that we just uh, couldn't sustain. So that, that part of the uh, and since about a third of our income tax comes in through the estimates and finals, that was a, a huge vulnerability to our, to our planning that we've been able to to deal with successfully by taking averages and, you know, using the volatility gap to uh, to uh, to, to end that roller coaster ride that, that we were on for, for so many years. So uh, that one, I, I think in uh, uh, many of us in the General Assembly see that one as probably the, the most important of the things that we did in um, in, in seventeen. Another, another question is regarding the uh, the spending cap. There've been some uh, reports recently that are, that we will have in room, at least for a while under the spending cap because of because of the fact of inflation, the amount of inflation we've had the last uh, year or so, will have the effect of Will have the effect of raising the cap at least for the at least for the time being. If you're just you could give us some thoughts on on your projections of about what the spending cap will look like, say, in the next. Couple of years, will it will it will start to tighten up again within a year or two? Or are we going to have uh? Uh, will we have more room than we've had in a while because of that inflation factor? Or uh what does your crystal ball tell you on the spending cap?
Well, at the moment, it's the latter. We're going to have more room as far as we can see under the spending cap going forward because of inflation. Uh, we'll do that calculation uh with OFA as we go along. We'll have a read on it when we do our budget. A document will will tell you what that number is. Um. Um, but I don't have a I don't have what the precise numbers are and growth rates are to hand, but we can get that and we'll have to explain that in the budget narrative in a couple of weeks. But at the moment, I don't see a spending cap issue. What's going to restrain our spending is revenue uh in the in the coming years, I think. So uh won't have a spending cap issue.
Great, good. Well, thank you again, Mr. Secretary, and uh you're a steady hand at the wheel and we're lucky to have you there.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Senator Senator Martin.
Thank you. Uh, congratulations and uh I'm looking forward to to working with you. Uh regarding that spending cap and the limit to the the our ability to because of the inflation. Uh, and you mentioned that it is a rep that we're really going to be harnessed by the revenue. Um, can you just explain that a little bit? It's because of the cap, we have a two percent revenue cap, if I'm not mistaken, that.
Well, the revenue cap is a uh a law that says you can only expend in this year, it's ninety eight point seven five percent of projected revenue. In fiscal twenty four, that ratchet's down to ninety eight point five percent. And in twenty five, it ratchets down to ninety eight point two five percent. So it's getting a little tighter. This year, it's yielding about two hundred eighty million dollars of savings that we cannot. I shouldn't say savings. It's a I think of it as a required savings account. You can't spend it. So it's about two hundred eighty million in this current fiscal year. It's part of the. Billion dollar or so budget surplus that we're showing in the current fiscal year after the volatility cap, by the way. Uh, so it's about one point eight plus the ones. It's about two point eight uh actual surplus. But the uh the revenue cap piece of that is about two hundred eighty million. Uh, that that's a good tool. It's one of the guardrails. What I meant by what's going to restrain overall spending is really our revenue, the the balanced budget, uh which is in our constitution. And that we all honor uh going forward. So we it's our obligation to present a balanced budget to you. It's your obligation to enact one. Uh, we will administer that.
I have a question regarding the. The bond locks. Are those are you looking to also increase uh to place bond locks or continue the bond locks?
Yes, the governor's called for that. I don't think we've landed on a term yet. Uh, we've had some internal debate about that, but we do want to extend those. Yes.
Okay, and I know this is sort of a conundrum here, right? If we if we uh have the surplus. Hmm, and we we can pay down on our long term liability. Or we can perhaps. I guess, depending on how much we are able to spend. But how are you guys looking to balance that? You know, some want to increase our spending, others want us to. Uh, maybe pay down partly on the long term liability. Where you where do you stand on that?
Well, I'm going to let the governor give a speech in three weeks where he tells you what he wants to do. Um. And I serve at the pleasure, but uh I think past his prologue, you've heard him say what he thinks about that and uh. We uh we think that paying down those long term liabilities, using the monies that waterfall, we call it, out of the rainy day fund is a good idea.
Okay, so let's assume that we decide to spend uh all the money. Um, I guess the question that I have is.
I'm getting a fit of the vapors right now, just listening to you.
I am, I am. Uh, what what type of steps do we go? If if we decide to spend rather than pay down, then what's our plan for paying down a long term liability?
Well, I'd ask you if that's what you're doing. What is your plan? I know what our plan is. It doesn't involve spending all the money. It involves, well, again, the governor's going to give you a speech in a couple of weeks. It'll tell you what our plans are.
Okay, thank you. Good no good no answers.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, we have a a virtual hand up, Representative Gresko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm going to put my chairman's hat on. Um, and Jeff, thank you uh for all of your assistance to the state over the years. Uh, for me especially, a couple of years ago with the bottle bill. Uh, but um uh I'm hearing from uh some department heads that. Uh, their uh agency bills are still. Um, waiting for approval from from OPM. And um, I think we're backing up uh to a couple of deadlines for submission of committee and raise bills. So I guess I'm asking. Uh, when can we expect the sign off on some agency bills, specifically deep and DOAT for me?
Uh, thank you for that question. Um, so the way that works is we start with our agencies in the summertime and we give them guidance. To send them, send us their legislative proposals by October first. They don't always do that. It's sometimes like herding cats. Um, and we work with them through the fall and uh they. I would have preferred that they be in front of you now. Uh, I am one part of that process. Uh, I I know that it lands in my inbox for some period of time. Uh, I turn things around personally very quickly. Uh, have done so, made a concerted effort to do so this year. If they're held up, I can tell you they're held up elsewhere. We do have a a process, a team process with the governor's office. And I know that we're all working uh assiduously to get those to you, uh certainly in advance of your raise bill deadline so that you can. Uh, raise them and have public hearings on them. Uh, I will uh inquire when I get back to the office where that is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Representative Nuccio also virtually.
I think you're doing a a great job and I'm very happy to hear um your answers to the questions that are coming forward to you here. Uh, I'm looking forward to to working with you. I think um. The things that you have said are very positive and enlightening. I'm wondering if you have any more detail at all. Uh, I'm sort of us having to wait for the the governor's speech. On what the intended possible uses are for the ARPA money that we currently have. I I think that there's a lot of opportunity for us to use it for some some really good things, but I'm wondering where the governor and the OPM's direction is right now on how we can utilize that money to the to the best effect.
Well, uh, again, we'll tell you in excruciating detail. The remaining ARPA money uh in a couple of weeks. Uh, we're trying as best we can to program it for one time expenses because it does go away. Uh, and everyone knew that. Uh, it's a little frustrating to have had to explain that to people who should know better. Uh, who asked for uh that we just continue funding at those levels, but um and I've had that experience recently. So uh we are going to try to make sure that uh it's one time stuff that we program going forward to the best of our ability. We 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 know we're going to have to pick up some of it in the out years, but. Uh, we will give you a uh a proposed reallocation as part of our proposed appropriations act in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so will that then be part of the budget proposal and the the conversations that the governors have in? Because these funds, they're typically not rolled up into the general fund, correct? They're kind of an off book account.
Right, they're not. They're in the appropriations act, though. They're all listed. Uh, you passed it last year. There's a line items that show up in the appropriations act. They're not part of the general fund. You're right. But we will show you that. We will propose a new uh allocation section for the ARPA money.
Okay, so they will not be co-mingled and in with the general fund dollars. That's my concern is if we're if we're implementing one time spend, as you said. Just making sure that it's not getting rolled up into the general fund. So then it becomes, as you have indicated, an out year. An out year item that we have to plan for. So I think I think I'm hearing you correctly and I appreciate your time. And um, again, I find the conversations with you very enlightening and. Um, I enjoy them because we're we're really kind of similar in how we look at budgetary things. So I I appreciate your input, the time you put forward, and I think you're going to make a a great. Continued on, um, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from committee members? Senator Duff.
Thank you. Uh, uh, thank you again, Mr. Secretary. I just want to add one thing I had heard over the weekend was that through the omnibus bill. Uh, that was passed uh late December. Uh, provided uh there's something that NCSL had worked on actually with a number of states and um some of our some of our House and Senate colleagues in Washington. That added some additional flexibility to some of the ARPA funds. Now, it may or may not uh be part of what. We have, um, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It not had been talked about much in the media, and I'm not sure how much that had gotten down to the stage yet, but. Apparently, um, in that omnibus bill, there was provided some additional uh flexibility on how some of that money is spent. So. I just bring that to your attention as you continue to uh prepare us for the governor's budget address in a couple of weeks as you had mentioned.
I hope my staff is aware of that and uh I'll check with them when I get back to the office.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Hold on, let me check virtually just just in case. All right, seeing none. Uh. Before you go, there's one question we ask of every nominee. Is there anything in your past that you believe might prove embarrassing to this committee, to the governor, to the state of Connecticut?
No.
Mr. Secretary, thank you so much for being with us today and uh and your time. Um. Thanks, thank you. And last, but certainly, certainly not least, um, we have our fourth item on on today's agenda, which is a a Senate resolution. Uh, for the reconfirmation of Vanessa Dorantes of Bristol to be Commissioner of Children and Families. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you can raise your right hand. Do you promise, swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. And for the record of clarity, my town of residence is now Hartford.
Well, I I love that. All right. Yes, absolutely. Uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Senator Duff, Representative Concepcion, Senator Kelly, Representative Yakarino and other distinguished members of the Executive and Legislative Nominations Committee. My name is Vanessa Dorantes and I am honored to be renominated by Governor Lamont to lead Connecticut's Department of Children and Families. I've served as Commissioner for four years. And I am incredibly proud of the progress the department has made. Progress that is only possible thanks to our dedicated workforce who persevered through the COVID nineteen pandemic. Ensuring that Connecticut's children were safe and provided for. I will uh read an abridged copy of my uh personal statement, but the committee has the full text. These four years have been most rewarding, have been the most rewarding and challenging of my professional career. Upon my nomination, we evaluated the department to determine if the structure was appropriate to achieve the goals of the administration. This process of an external advisory group also included critical structure reforms such as the establishment of seven strategic goals. To serve as benchmarks for the department's progress. Developing an exec team to advise and set policy incorporating all DCF divisions. Creating a specific Bureau of Child Welfare to ensure consistent practice across our regional offices. And cultivating a strategic communication plan to improve relationships with key stakeholders, including legislators, the media and community partners. These initiatives position the department to better serve children and families while providing more transparent and open management structure for both internal and external stakeholders. In March of twenty twenty, it became abundantly clear that COVID nineteen was nothing like anything we'd ever experienced before. Causing the world to come to a screeching halt, it also became abundantly clear that DCF did not have the ability to stop. Connecticut's children counted on us and continue to today. Governor Lamont's leadership was key and decisive. The governor's unified command structure was replicated within DCF as key department stakeholders were assembled daily, then weekly, and then at a cadence dictated by the circumstances we were in. The support from the administration and perseverance of DCF staff were ensured that PPE was effectively distributed. Foster parents, providers and uh policies that were set for our staff to continue to work safely. Including virtual twos to accommodate the collective telework agreement. We work closely with our provider network and those professionals who worked tirelessly in their communities every day. I was also keenly aware of the need to let the public and policymakers know how we were managing. DCF was one of the first agencies to have regular video conferences with legislators. We released nearly daily emails to legislators, the media, community partners and uh across social media. I recorded commissioner videos to ensure real time communication with our staff and held statewide uh leadership summits to provide provider meetings. And virtual all staff town hall meetings throughout this precarious time. Throughout all of this, we were able to reduce the overall number of children in care by thirty percent. Our past four years, close to six thousand children have achieved permanency, including more than twenty four hundred reunifications. Oh, more than eighteen hundred adoptions and more than fourteen hundred transfers of guardianship. Back in twenty nineteen, when I came before you, I shared that my career at DCF began as one of the first groups of social workers. Added to address the department's shortcomings identified in the YF consent decree. At that time, there were five exit outcome measures remaining after thirty years of federal oversight. These measures were caseload size, the quality of our visitation and investigations, as well as the needs of children in care being met and consistent treatment planning. I committed to Governor Lamont and to you that these were practices related to issues and my experience uh inside the department will allow us to have a laser focused. Improvement in these key areas. And happy to report after eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty two days, the clock stopped. In full circle moment, we were able to finally exit this consent decree. Also in twenty nineteen, Congress passed the Family First Prevention Services Act or or loan as family first. That changed the way states are reimbursed from the federal government for child protective services. DCF led a multi-agency effort to draft our state's family first prevention plan. Under family first, federal funds can now be used to reimburse states for preventative measures and programs to keep children out of foster care and safely at home. Connecticut was well positioned for this change, given our efforts over the past decades to keep families safe and together by investing in community based in home services. In the state's prevention plan, as it was developed, meetings were held. With over three hundred unique stakeholders, including parents with lived expertise from across the state, which received national attention for our inclusive approach. Connecticut is unique in its commitment to a community pathway that goes further upstream than other jurisdictions. Connecticut is currently in the implementation phase of this prevention plan. As the pandemic started to wane, the behavioral health needs of children became more pronounced. Our team saw this crisis approaching and convened a uh children's mental health symposium in the spring of twenty twenty one. The symposium examined gaps in service continuum and discussed ways to properly appropriate the millions of state dollars received in funding from the American Rescue uh Plan Act or ARPA. It also provided an opportunity for the department to collaborate across health and human services, state agencies, providers and other policymakers. The governor and legislature approved the largest one time investment in children's behavioral health in states history in the state's history. With nearly three hundred million dollars in federal and state dollars committed to the department to enhance the existing service array and create new services to fill gaps. Enhancing service coordination, expanding emergency mobile site, increases to access mental health and the establishment of an urban trauma network, urban urgent crisis centers. Subacute stabilization centers are all underway. The charge of a new DCF division is to ensure all children, not just those committed to DCF, have access to services to treat their behavioral health needs. Connecticut DCF is a national leader in child welfare. I'm currently the the chair of the National Association of Public Child Welfare Administrators. And lastly, this past fall, we were humbled to be recognized for our thirty percent reduction of children in care, as well as the incorporation of our equity. And reducing disproportionality here in Connecticut that resulted in a segment on NBC's Today Show where DCF was described as a model for the nation for their thirteen million viewers. Connecticut's DCF, um Connecticut DCF Deputy Commissioner Jody Hill-Lilly co-chairs a national partnership on child safety. Which is a collaboration of jurisdictions steeped in safety science by establishing cross jurisdictional data comparison. To reduce the likelihood of child fatalities or poor outcomes. Here at home, I serve as the vice chair of the Highly Effective Governors Council on Women and Girls with the Lieutenant Governor. I co-chair the Alcohol and Drug Policy Council and our and DCF is active on several other boards and commissions. The post pandemic, post consent decree DCF is focused on consistent application of an ABCD safety practice model. And enhancing our work with older youth and care through our vital practice model. DCF is committed to professionalism, transparency and continuous quality improvement. I made a declaration to introduce you to the DCF that I know. And while holding the department accountable to the public's trust, we have continued to strengthen partnerships while continually rising to the complex challenges of families in crisis. I thank you for your time today and if reconfirmed, I commit to upholding this continued high standard of child welfare system evolution. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you so much for for being here and for everything that you do um for for the state of Connecticut. Uh, and congratulations on your renomination.
Thank you.
Um, just a couple, a couple of questions on on my end. You mentioned earlier in your your testimony that. Uh, as part of the work of the, I think it was a Harvard fellows, um, you created a kind of a some some steps and one of the steps is creating an executive team.
Yes.
Uh, at DCF, who's part of the DC or the executive team over there? And are there any specifics policies that have come out of the the work with that team?
Certainly. So um you referenced the um Harvard fellow that helped us in our transition at that time. Certainly. So you referenced the Harvard Fellow that helped us in our transition at that time. We conducted extensive domain mapping, which allowed us to look across the department. And although I came from inside, I wanted to make sure that I assembled an exec team that could fill my blind spots. So we used that domain mapping to see how things were conducted in each of our fourteen area offices, so we could create a system of structure. Then the functions that people provide, and then do we have the right people in those? Oftentimes, when transitions happen, you start with the people. Who am I going to put where? And we were very methodical in the structure-function-people approach, and that organizational design has helped us through the last four years. So my exec team consists of two deputies, one on the operations side, one on the administrative or support function side. I also have a director, our bureau chief of external affairs, who handles all of our government affairs with the legislative advocacy. We have our communications folks that are through that particular division. We have a division of child welfare very specific to our area office operations. And then we also have a division of strategic planning. To round out my exec team, I have the general counsel reporting directly to me.
That's great. You know, something I'm always thinking about, and particularly for staff of of a department like DCF is, you know, there's got to be a lot of heart-wrenching, you know, situations that, you know, no matter how how much they try, I mean, it's affect going to affect them, you know, when when they ultimately go home and and clock out at at night. So I guess my question is, you know, what type of support system is in place currently over at DCF to to help your staff with whatever they need, whether it's mental health, health stuff, or just stress, or just their emotional well-being overall?
Thank you for that question. I am acutely astutely aware of that particular issue of of burnout within the work that we do, because I've, you know, worked within this particular agency my entire career. You know, one of the things that we are really proud of is that every decision that we make, we think first about the constituents and the children, families, and communities that we serve, and simultaneously our workforce. And in fact, one of the pillars of our overall strategic goals of our agency is workforce and to make sure that they feel mutually supported, so then they can do the job that we need them to do every day. You know, when we think about the availability of the employee assistant program that's provided through DAS, we also have created a position that is Director of our Organizational Climate, and that has enhanced and evolved over the years, because, you know, it's definitely a piece of heart work that we do, and we have to pay attention to just what our our workers experience. Whenever there is a fatality or near miss, whenever there is a a death of someone in a particular area office, we've had social workers or supervisors who have passed away either unexpectedly or due to illness. We activate that particular person and support, not only from the exec team, but from this particular staff member whose job it is solely to make sure that our staff are okay.
Thank you for that. And my last question, I have the 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 pleasure of having Connecticut Children's Medical Center in my my district. And I know that over the last few years, you know, they've been inundated with a lot of children seeking mental, mental health, you know, from from COVID and even even prior to that. So I guess my question is, what role does DCF play with partnering with institutions like CCMC and other other organizations throughout the state to to alleviate and mitigate some of the issues that that we're seeing in our in the mental health of our children?
Thank you for that. You know, as long, as well as being the statutory agency related to children's child protective services, we also, as you know, are the statutory agency responsible for children's behavioral health. We too view CCMC as a valued partner in that continuum, along with the Connecticut Hospital Association. This past two years has been an elevated partnership with both of those entities to really think about the full children's behavioral health continuum. We have several initiatives underway that, as a result of the attention that the legislature and the administration gave children's behavioral health last year or last session that are underway. One of the things that, to answer your question very specifically about alleviating the pressures on the emergency department, is one of the initiatives that had care coordinators, care coordinations, care coordinators, my goodness, facilitating safe and timely discharges from the emergency department and hospital inpatient units. We have six total statewide units, and that was a one-time funding of two million dollars, which has been fully implemented to help alleviate. There's, you know, other initiatives across the continuum that are also underway that I could give you additional detail on, but that one specifically looks to alleviating the pressures in the EDs.
Appreciate that. And again, thank you so much for for being here today and congratulations on your your renomination. With that, I'll open it up to the rest of the committee, starting with Senator Duff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Hello, Senator. How are you?
Good, good. Nice to see you here today, and thank you for your good work. I think your testimony basically could have said, I got you out of the Juan F. Consent decree, and then a mic drop and walked out the door, and we could have taken a vote and been fine. But nonetheless, the work continues. So first of all, big congratulations on that. That had been, I know a lot of, a lot of folks worked on that, including your predecessor. But, you know, you you helped us finally tie the bow on that one and finish that out. And certainly, government legislature provided unprecedented dollars in in number of areas there. But but it was, you get the credit for it, and we appreciate the work that you've done to finally finish that. So congratulations. I want to just ask you two things. One has to do with some staffing and challenges you've had with staffing there and being able to hire new, new employees. There had been some, we had some legislators had met at Solnet last summer. And I think it was literally the only rainy day over the summertime. And you were gracious enough to be there, and we heard from staff, we heard from some unions. And really, you know, had a good, I thought it was very good collaborative meeting about some of the challenges you face at DCF with regard to staffing and some folks moving into other agencies. Can you elaborate on the status of that and what progress, if any, has been made since that meeting?
I certainly will. Thank you. And thank you, Senator, for the question. I'd be remiss if I did not at least say that, you know, when we think about exiting the consent decree, all of that credit goes to our workforce and all of that credit goes to the leadership at DCF. So thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that. As it relates to staffing, as you've indicated, our biggest challenge is on the healthcare side. We know from the, what we heard from Secretary Beckham in terms of the challenges of the labor force, that one of the things that has really put a lot of attention on the ability of DCF to be able to keep units open and functional in our children's psychiatric unit is the inability to hire nurses. DAS has a cadre of recruitment efforts underway that we've participated in over the last several months since you had come to to visit. Unfortunately, those strategies have not yielded the number of staff that we need to be able to reopen those units. That being said, DAS, at the instruction of the governor, along with OPM, has convened a small working group that addresses specifically getting those units up and running. And so the report from that working group is due within days, and we should be able to have very concrete, short and long-term, you know, real, real ways to be able to get those units open.
Thank you. I know it's a challenge for sure with employees and, and, you know, the fact that some employees can move from one agency to another, have better hours, make more money, and have the same degree, basically. So it is, and the work that, as you alluded to earlier, the work you do has a burnout rate. It's difficult work, and so we need to be cognizant of that as well. Lastly, can you, I know you've been working on, and you talked about a little bit too in your testimony, but you've been doing a lot of work in racial justice, which is, you know, again, I think there's some ways I think there, it's, while it's great, I'm glad you're doing that. And I'm glad that it's able to be a priority of the commissioner. And I hopefully, and maybe that's because of the fact that there's been some changes with the, you know, space now with trying, getting out of the consent decree and and some of the, some of the pressure and stress on other issues has allowed for this this area to take its rightful place as a priority. So can you, can you elaborate on that a little bit on some of your work there?
Certainly. Thank you for that question as well. The first part of the the question or statement related to transfers out of our agency, I think what myself and a lot of our colleagues anticipated with the retirements that we knew were going to happen during these last four years, what we didn't anticipate is the choices people made during and following the pandemic to do different work. And so we saw a considerable number of staff transfer from DCF to other state agencies or even out of state service. And that required us to really think about how the stability of our work workforce, which, you know, we have a very strong attrition rate within DCF Connecticut. And we saw a lot of people, particularly new staff coming into the department, really trying to find their way to determine if this was the right fit for them. And I think across the country, what we're seeing from the workforce, particularly in human services, as I I sit on one of the national boards, executive governing boards of human service agencies, that, you know, people are making different choices about the type of work that they do. We are very fortunate to have partnerships with our schools of social work to keep the pipeline of folks that are interested in child protective services work and really come up with some innovative ways to secure interest in child protective service work. One such pilot, we just completed our second cohort of with the University of Connecticut, is identifying bilingual social workers early on in undergrad social work curriculum so that they can have a bird's eye view to what it feels like to work for our department, which creates a better pipeline of multilingual staff, which leads right into the second question or comment that you made, which is the department's racial justice work. One of the things that I've been passionate about my entire career is fairness and equity across all the kids and families that we serve, but also our workforce is another one of those parallel things. And before I sat in this seat, I chaired the state's DCF statewide racial justice work group. So seamlessly, even in the midst of a pandemic, even in the midst of exiting a consent decree, which, by the way, the, you know, lead plaintiff is a little boy named Juan F., we have to, have to pay attention to race as we execute child welfare. And so we, you know, thought, after we did a lot of our internal work, after you all passed Public Act eighteen dash one eleven to codify our racial justice work so that we can't slip backwards as other jurisdictions kind of just look at racial justice and equity as a shiny new penny, and let's just do some trainings and everybody will be fine. We took a very comprehensive approach to separate our racial justice work from our diversity action teams. And so the groups in the agencies that do cultural celebrations, whether it's St. Patrick's Day, or Black History Month, or Three Kings Day, or those things that we know help us appreciate our own diversity as a workforce, those things still happen, but they don't happen in our racial justice work. Our racial justice work is outcome-related. It's addressing the practices and decisions that we make at key decision-making points. We look at our data, we disaggregate our data, and we know whether or not our, what we do in terms of our service delivery is impacting all Connecticut citizens differently or equally. One of the things that we have been very conscious of is disproportionality and disparity in the index by which children come into care. So an example of improvements that we have seen as a result of some of our tenacious attention to racial equity is that about ten years ago, black children were about four point one three times more likely to come into care than their white counterparts. Today, that's two and a half percent. Still more work to do, but significant changes. Hispanic children were about two point nine seven or three times more likely than their white counterparts to come into care. Today, that's about one and a half. So we are moving in the right direction as it relates to decreasing disparity and disproportionality, but also looking at Connecticut's population all overall. We know that Connecticut's child population is getting smaller and more diverse, so our service array has to be reflective of the diversity of all of our families. And so we are not only excited to be able to continue our racial justice work, but we push it a little bit further. So for instance, we challenged every single one of the senior leaders in DCF to come up with a change initiative that is within their sphere of influence. I like to say to my staff that racial justice work feels like boiling the ocean. You don't know where to start, but you know what you can do. We can all do small things. And so we challenged each of our senior leaders to come up with a change initiative, attach metrics to it, apply the PDSA model of Plan Do Study Act, and see if you could make some differences and some changes in the areas that you are responsible for. And we're happy to report there are thirty-three change initiatives underway within the department that we are determining whether to scale up or whether or not, you know, it's something that we can replicate in other parts of the state. And that was not just our caseload carrying work, but all of our senior leaders. So for instance, our medical and wellness division is doing some great work around disproportionality as it relates to asthma plans. Our fiscal department is really looking at the diversity of our service array and who deliver services to our kids and families in terms of their diverse structures. So, you know, this was not just a one-and-done. It's an ongoing effort until it doesn't have to be.
Great. Thank you for your complete and passionate answer.
I get excited about that topic, so thank you.
And for making it a priority. So I appreciate that and look forward to supporting you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Representative Jacarino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's really a pleasure to meet you. I think we met in the past, but it was, thanks for speaking with me yesterday and taking the time. And really, for you, and I said it yesterday, and I mean it, all the men and women you work with that help our children and our families. It's it's such an intense but fulfilling job, but to, to Chairman Concepcion, I can't speak today. Chairman Concepcion's point earlier, there's got to be a burnout for our men and women. Just the emotional aspect of it, and just the heart-wrenching aspect of it. And I'm pleased to hear that you do have some sort of reprieve for, you know, the men and women that that serve our public. But I did ask you yesterday, and I I know I get involved a little with Albrook Boys and Girls Club in North Haven. There's the Boys and Girls Club in New Haven. There's a lot of boys and girls clubs throughout our state and in activities, activities in schools. So DCF, you'll partner with either through somebody that works for the agency with these important organizations?
We do. In our fourteen area offices, we have varying degrees of connections within our local communities. Some of the Ys and YWCAs and YNCA's have actual contracts with us. Some of the Boys and Girls Clubs do as well, but many of them work within their municipalities. Where I I think some of that work will see enhanced attention is through our increased prevention efforts and really thinking that's that further upstream approach to really get involved with kids and families and build up community-based services, so they don't have to become involved with a child protective service agency and that families are strengthened within their communities. That's a perfect example of a stakeholder group that can help to do that. So that's DCF's role in that.
It's really helped in our community and in New Haven, because if you're diverted from bad activity or, you know, it leads to bad things, and it's hopefully keeps people together for an education and keeps, keeps, you know, keeps families together.
Exactly.
But I, I, like I said to Commissioner Beckham, I wish I could vote for you. I can't. But I could support you publicly, and we should support your agency publicly with what you need through OPM and through all the agencies, Department of Aging. But just keep up the work, make, keep, we have to keep tracking, tracking what's going on to try to prevent. It's better to prevent than put money later, and people's lives are ruined in some, some cases, unfortunately.
An ounce of prevention. Thank you very much. And thank you for the kind words.
No, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative, Senator Looney, followed by Representative Arnone, then Senator Martin, and Senator Hartley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Senator.
A couple of, a couple of questions. Again, you talked about the impact of the pandemic on on your department, just as it's had cast a shadow in other areas of of society. I know that if you might talk a little bit about the, the way in which cases come to your department's attention. I understand that that must have changed somewhat during the pandemic, because children were out of school for substantial periods, or they were learning, studying virtually from home, or so that probably you had a decline in the number of referrals coming through school systems. As school counselors and others, did you have an increase in other, other sources of of reporting through, through police departments or through the juvenile court system or through, or through hospital emergency rooms or private providers in the community? Just to, just wondering how how the mix of reporting might have been affected by the pandemic.
Thank you for that question, because it allows us to really talk about the work that happened during the pandemic when we had to pivot, unlike we had ever could have anticipated. Nobody, you know, knew that that was going to impact just our daily way of life, and particularly one of the biggest pieces and one of the biggest places that children spend their day, and that's in school. And so we have worked very closely with our education partners, whether it's through the State Department of Education, that, you know, myself and previous Commissioner Cardona, now secretary, did some webinars together right in the beginning of the pandemic to really think about ways at which we could partner with schools as we transition to the unknown. That continued with current Commissioner Russell Tucker in terms of our teams connecting with each other. in terms of our teams connecting with each other to provide support on a statewide level. And you're right, the um reduction in the number of calls that came through our twenty-four seven care line on just like every other um jurisdiction across the country plummeted. Um, I participated and members of my team participated in weekly calls um that were hosted by Casey Family Programs that were a peer-to-peer call through um jurisdictions across the country. In fact, I was um one of the first commissioners that they asked to talk about our strategies of addressing what's going to happen, what is happening as the pandemic started to unfold, to share with my colleagues across the country, some of the things that we saw. Um, when I look back at our data in twenty twenty, we saw a reduction to um just over fifty thousand calls that are that were made to our care line. And so for a comparison, the year before in twenty nineteen, we were close to seventy thousand calls that calendar year. So there was a significant reduction in not only the number of calls that came in, but also um where they came from. So typically, education professionals make up the largest portion of who calls in reports to our care line. Because schools were shuttered, we weren't getting that same volume from the schools. Um, but it also gave us an opportunity to look at our data a lot closely. Um, and what we saw was that although education professionals and schools make up that significant portion of our calls to our care line, they only make up about six percent of what's substantiated. So what that told us is that we really need to um partner differently with our schools locally to see what it is that their um staff members need when they are feel like they need to call in a child abuse neglect report, when really it may be just help connecting families to um services and communities. We actually embedded um social workers in in a pilot area and uh the Waterbury area and some of our highest volume schools um during that time to see if we couldn't partner differently to um, you know, as the we knew that the reports would start to come back up once the pandemic waned. But we wanted to establish relationships in those schools to see if there was a correlation between having someone from the department embedded in the schools to be able to answer questions if the um staff members there had them. And we we've seen uh lots of success with that particular program. But I will tell you, we are um almost up to pre-pandemic levels in terms of report volume. Um, a uh in December of calendar year twenty twenty-two, we were back up to sixty-three thousand calls into our uh our care line. So I would assume that that feels like it's pre-pandemic levels kind of resumed. Um, we know that during that time, the high majority of our calls were coming from law enforcement and our medical professionals and um uh community-based mental health programs that were still having regular contact with children. So um we're back to pre-pandemic levels of our volume and um the acuity, I would say, in terms of how how um what families are dealing with on the aftermath of the pandemic is pretty much the focus of what comes in through our our care line at this time.
Right, thank you. And does that number include um uh anonymous calls or calls from neighbors uh that might observe something and then they're just disturbed about what they see and then uh and then call DCF for that reason?
Absolutely, one hundred percent that our um our care line accepts calls from mandated reporters, which may make up about sixty percent of dark our calls. And they also um receive calls from anonymous friends, neighbors, or anyone that has a reasonable suspicion of abuse or neglect.
Right, right, and um I know just in in terms of the uh this significant increase of 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 children who have mental health problems uh we've seen during the pandemic, it's really affecting schools. I know I had a meeting recently at the Yale Child Study Center, and they said that, you know, prior to the pandemic, they didn't have a waiting list at all. Now they have a six-month waiting list, and that's very frustrating, because the the children who refer there uh need help right away, and then to have a six-month waiting list is really uh just untenable, because many of those families are um in a fairly acute need. And uh and it's just an example of the the problems that schools are seeing and the um uh child uh uh agencies. And then the fact that we have the ongoing problem of of uh outside of schools, it's very difficult sometimes for families to um access mental health services because of the insurance problems and so many providers don't take insurance or don't take Medicaid. And it it really is a crisis that that impacts in um in many ways. Uh, uh, one thing I I wanted to ask you about, yeah, in uh prior years, one of the problems that DCF had was um the large number of out-of-state placements and the the concern that out-of-state placements couldn't possibly be um as well monitored and uh followed as closely as in-state placements were. And and I know your department has made uh progress in the in that regard. If you could talk a little bit about the the trends in that area. And and does it mean that more state agencies uh or more state entities have now upgraded their capacity to be able to handle the kind of cases that that used to be sent out of state? So if you just talk about that a little bit.
Thank you so much for both of those, because I do think there is a correlation in terms of the full behavioral health continuum for children. Um, one of the things that we are um very proud of is the ability to stand up um new programs as a result of the unprecedented um uh attention and commitment from the legislature and attention from the administration last year to children's behavioral health. And so there are um various uh initiatives underway. Um intensive transition care management is what we um just referenced a little bit, a little bit ago about care coordinators who help facilitate some of the pressures off the ED. But we also saw um an expansion to emergency mobile crisis to twenty-four seven and a statewide reach. Um, all of these things can st- can help alleviate some of the pain points and some of the wait lists, as you referenced. Um, there are a couple of other things that are currently underway that um we will see uh some additional help to what you are describing as the community-based mental health service system for kids. And that is an urgent crisis center that um is creates twenty-three hour crisis centers to mitigate emergency department visits and aftercare. There will be a total of four of those programs across the state. Um, they are in the process right now of being mostly implemented. The programs are in the process of hiring and training staff, and we expect implementation of those by March of this year. Um, we also have uh acute crisis stabilization centers. That is a short-term congregate programming designed as a step down to the urgent crisis center for short-term alternatives to longer placements of behavioral health needs of kids and transitioning resources upon release when children uh no longer need that level of care. That um a a attention and commitment um had fewer respondents to the RFP. We had one response and we have um subsequently solicited other providers to try to help. So that is partially implemented with the anticipation of that one going live um by July of this year. We also have an expansion to access mental health. And if you recall, access mental health is the consultation that pediatricians can get to offer some behavioral health guidance. So while you have a child who may not be able to get into um immediate behavioral health services in the community, their pediatrician can help them um start to make some of those uh connections, whether it's through pharmacological advances or medicines that the pediatrician can prescribe through telehealth visits with consultation um with a uh clinical support cons- consult. So there's hub hubs across the state that um pediatricians can all access to give them additional information to help serve the children, uh child patients that they have. So an expansion to access mental health was also included in the um children's behavioral health continuum. We believe that when these initiatives are fully up and running, we'll see a decrease in the um waitlist that we currently have for the existing programs, because there won't be the bottlenecks across the continuum of care for uh children's behavioral health. We also, um, when you asked about children and out-of-state placements and our reduction in congregate care that had happened over the last ten years, we um, one of the things that I was committed to when uh coming to this seat in twenty nineteen was to not lose momentum in those key areas. So we drove down, um, at one point, we had thirty percent or a third of the children who were in care in congregate settings. When I came on board, that number had been below ten percent. And we're happy to say that less than, less than five percent of kids that we have in care are in congregator group settings. And um and with the prior administration under Commissioner Katz, there were hundreds of children in out-of-state care. She put in a lot of firewalls within the department to bring kids back, reinvest those dollars in community-based services. And um at but we're happy to say that as of today, there are six children in out-of-state care who have complex needs. So from hundreds to um really decreasing that number and sustaining that over the last four years.
Well, that that's terrific progress. And that was, I know one of the uh, the 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 reasons that was given for the large number of out-of-state placements in prior years was that um Connecticut facilities were saying with we, yes, we don't have the staff or we don't have the resources or we just don't have the uh, uh, the uh, the setting or the uh, uh, or the licensed professionals to deal with these very difficult uh cases. So uh, so have the Connecticut-based facilities themselves upgraded uh the level of services that they're providing or their 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 professionalism, their capacity to deal with the kind of cases that were previously sent out of state?
I will put our service array up against any other jurisdiction. Our providers who still contract with the department have risen to the occasion. They've evolved their service plan. They um have um allowed us to be creative and thinking about ways of um using their services differently. You know, as you drive down congregate care, a lot of our providers invested in brick, brick and mortar group homes for years. You all heard them talk about um group homes, and a lot of you heard complaints from neighborhoods saying, you know, not in my backyard. And many of those um group homes no longer exist, because we don't have um the need for congregate settings for children as we did in the past. And so instead of saying to those providers, oh, well, you did what we needed you to do back then, and now you have to eat that cost. They have been very creative um in their ability to change their business model to respond to the changing needs of the kids that we have in care. So one such model is our quality parenting centers. And so that example, there's about eight of them now across the state that use those existing buildings for visitation between children and family and and their um parents when they are close to reunification rather than coming to a DCF office. So that's an example of a provider shifting their business model and being fiscally responsible and responsive to the needs of the state. We've also um changed our um therapeutic foster care, and there's a redesign of that particular model for the first time in twenty years. To really think about what supports a foster home will need to make sure that child with children with complex medical need, complex clinical needs, get the support that they need and get their fo- foster parents the support that they need. So I think, you know, all of those things really speak to the veracity and the um acumen of our 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 uh provider network. And, you know, they've worked really, really hard over the course of the pandemic. Many of them right along these alongside DCF never shut.
Right, right, and uh, when you talk to raise the the issue of foster care, that's at least to my next question about. Uh, we know that that in in many cases, uh, it's much better for the child if a uh, if a uh a relative, a responsible relative can be found to uh take on the care of the child rather than placing them in the foster care system. And uh, we talked a little bit about the uh, the uh improvements or percentages who of kids who are now placed with relative caregivers uh as opposed to being placed in the uh the foster care system with the with unrelated people.
So I, you know, I'm I'm pleased to say that, you know, I'm I'm a little biased in this area, because, you know, we have very strong, a very strong cadre of foster parents. And in fact, we espouse what's called the Quality Parenting Initiative, where we um really recommend that that foster parent partner with the department and this child and the child's biological family if the child cannot be placed with relatives. So we're happy to say that eighty-seven percent of the kids that we have in care are with a family. There's this little, maybe about nine or ten percent that are in independent living are older youth in care, because you know, we have about two hundred and fifty children um that are over the age of eighteen that we service post-majority. So that number of kids that we, you know, still work with as they transition from the department. What we are very proud of is the increase in children who are placed with their relatives, whether maternal or paternal relatives. And um of the children that are under the age of eighteen, close to fifty percent are with relatives. And we continue to make that number aspirationally closer to seventy percent as we look to um find more ways for children to be serviced by relatives or someone that they know. They just do better, they're more stable, and there's a commitment from the family that's just different when you are with a relative. So I appreciate the question.
Right, and the uh, I know that uh, that that's also an issue uh in the uh, the probate courts who handle a significant part of this work. My my law partner was a former chancellor probate in uh in New Haven. And uh, spent a gr- a great deal of time in trying to uh uh find uh appropriate relative caregivers uh for uh for children rather than have them go into the foster care system. Uh, one of the the challenges was that the uh, uh, the stipend for relative caregivers was so much, so much less uh for a long time than the standard uh uh amount that was given to uh uh foster parents, so that you often had uh maybe a grandmother or an aunt who was herself uh struggling financially, uh wanting to take on the care of an eastern nephew or grandchild, but finding it a financial struggle to do so. As uh, if you talk a little bit about the 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 financial side of it.
Please, I I certainly will, and this is something that my colleagues across the country um kind of grapple with. In Connecticut, we're very proud to license and compensate relatives. So for relatives who are licensed by the department, their um monthly stipend is the exact same as our core foster homes. Um, other states don't compensate relatives, and that there is though, a two-tier process that if relatives secure um or look to see whether or not they are eligible through the Department of Social Services and do not come through the Child Protective Service door, the um compensation is a little bit different. Um, so there is still a two-tier approach, but for all the relatives who come through the department and um their child that they are looking to take care of, that's their relative. If we are engaged in uh juvenile court and we have custody, that that relative will be licensed and compensated as our um core foster homes are.
Right, right, and uh, and I think that that's really important, because it was uh, in many cases, the relative, most often a grandmother or not, uh, would be really undertaking a financial struggle to provide the care for the child, even though they they wanted to and they love the child and wanted to be nurturing, but it was a often a very difficult burden for them, because they were often uh their own incomes were were marginal when they took this on. Uh, I know that uh, uh, as you mentioned, the one of the uh, the most stressful aspects uh for your caseworkers is when they have to uh, they have to go to court to uh seek termination of parental rights. And uh, I know that also from, I know a number of uh, of attorneys, assistant attorneys general who have worked in the uh, the child protection uh office, and it's uh, one of their more stressful assignments also, because they're representing uh DCF in the in those cases. But uh, uh, so I I know that uh, that's uh one of the areas where that area, the AG's office, has a higher degree of turnover, I think, than other uh, other units within the AG's office, just because of the stress factor there.
I appreciate the attention to that, because that's another stakeholder partner that we work very closely with. And, you know, really, um, our AGs are just like, so in other jurisdictions, there's not the in-ho- in-house legal as we have here and the AG's office. We are fortunate in Connecticut to have in-house consultation from our legal division that works very closely with our um AG partners. They also had significant turnover, and we um, you know, continue to work with them and their leadership to ensure that all of our offices are covered and all of our courts are covered um and that we have continued conversations with them about the decisions that we're making on cases. Um, the other piece that I wanted to tack on to the last response is that, you know, our kinship practice is evolving and that we are implementing a kinship navigator program that kind of is kinship two point O. You know, in the past, it was secure relative and place the child with the relative and we're good. You know, the child's with their grandma, the child's with their aunt, they're good. But our children are coming with um a lot of trauma responses, a lot of needs that the relative just may not be able to handle on their own. So really thinking about the ways at which we support our kin, um not just with compensation, but making sure that we have a model that supports the needs of understanding the needs of their relative in a different dynamic. This child is still your grandchild, but it in day-to-day caretaking responsibilities that requires a little bit level of different level of support that we can now help to provide um our our relatives. So we're happy to be developing a kinship navigator program. Um, but you know, I I appreciate the attention to the um growing caseloads at the juvenile court and the Assistant Attorney General's Office on the child protection side, too.
Okay, just one, one last question, Commissioner, and that is, in these cases where you have uh children where the uh, uh, the parent is uh judged to be in incompetent care for them and they are removed and rights are turned out, how how frequently or does it, is it highly unlikely that the the parent ever uh recovers stability to the point where they're able to petition to get custody of the child back and to reverse the decision to terminate the parental rights? How often does that happen?
So certainly, um, our primary goal all the time, if we reach a level where a child has to be removed, the very first in-concurrent plan is reunification. So thinking about ways to get that um whatever crisis that brought the family to our attention back to stability, so a child can be safely returned. If that can't happen, really working inside, if I were to say one of the areas that the department um has lower than the national average that we continue to focus on is timeliness to permanency and how long it takes for those work, those things to happen for a child either to be re-unified, transfer of guardianship or adopt adopted. Those are areas that were a little bit longer than other parts of the country. I suspect that our attention to relative care could drive the length of the length of time that a child is in care very differently, because a relative may not be likely to say, I'm gonna adopt this child or transfer guardianship. I want to give my relative a little bit more time to address whatever brought them to. That's that right now is a hypothesis of mine that we're kind of testing out to see if that's probably the reason why. Because as our relative numbers go up, so does the length of time that children sometimes spend um in care. So having said that, the question related to whether or not So having said that, the question related to whether or not, um, once termination of parental rights occurs, can a child be resumed, um, can a child be re-unified with that parent? We have an, we have the ability in Connecticut for that terminated parent to re-petition the court to have their rights reversed. And in very rare instances, it can occur if the person, um, whatever the circumstances were related to their termination, um, have drastically changed and the court has found that, um, it's something that we should assess and they can determine whether or not can happen, does happen here in Connecticut.
Great, good. Well, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. And, uh, once again, uh, your, your work is some of the most important work being done by any agency in the state. And congratulations on what you've done for the last four years and looking forward to its continuance.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for the insightful questions.
All right, moving along, Representative Arnon, followed by Senator Martin, Senator Hartley and Senator Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had, uh, many of four years of listening to testimony, um, from public, uh, health, um, that you've given over the years. And, and I want to thank you for your, not only your, your passion on your subject, but being there all the time to make sure legislators like us hear, um, our side of the story and your side of the story for the, uh, defense of children and families. So first of all, thank you. Most of my questions were answered in some form or the other. We're just talking about grandparents raising grandchildren, which is a big issue, uh, in my, in my district. I actually put a bill in this year, tried to get the family resource centers, uh, involved in this too. Because there is, there really isn't, um, as much, uh, equity between that and foster is, I think, and many of the grandparents think there should be. So that's, that's a huge issue for us and, and I'm glad that your department is, is, uh, your staff has come to the meetings, uh, and at, uh, seven, eight o'clock at night, spoke with the, uh, grandparents, reassured them, helped them, um, and helped them, helped me form legislation, which I again, thank, thank you very much for, uh, embedded employees. Uh, you just, uh, spoke about that earlier too. We've had two employees embedded in our youth, uh, services now, uh, for many years. And it's a great opportunity for staff to actually meet families and meet the children on a, on a play basis, not just on a, um, uh, when they're enforcing. So we built them a brand new office too. I'm proud to say they're out of the closet down there. So we have a very nice facility for them and, and that's all I have to say. I just want to thank you and your department, um, for everything you've done for, uh, my district and, uh, keep up the great work.
Thank you very much for the, the kind words. Thank you for the advocacy of community-based work. This is, you know, hard work, but it's work that we, nobody should be doing in silos. We should all be working across functions and agencies. And we're happy to be a part of local communities because as you just indicated, it works really well when that happens.
One last thing too is you said working, uh, across agencies, uh, you, you're working also with our police department, our social services, our youth department. Um, and that is just, um, a breath of fresh air today and it's, uh, and our school department too, don't want to leave them out.
All of the above, thank you.
Thank you, Representative, uh, Senator Moore.
Thank you. Hello again.
Hello, Senator.
Thank you for taking time out of your busy scheduling a meeting with me last week. I really enjoyed the conversation. I shared with you my past, uh, experience on the children's committee when I first arrived. And you shared with me all the changes that, uh, you've done. And, uh, I can't say enough about what you've done. So thank you so much. Just very quickly, um, I, I think maybe just two questions. Uh, in your testimony, you talk about a prevention plan that you submitted to the federal government. And it sounds like we've got some funding from them. Can you just elaborate a little bit about that prevention plan, what, what it does?
The full prevention plan is, um, has been approved by the feds and it is located on our website. And I can certainly share it with members of the committee. So you have it in your hands, there's an executive summary on the front, so you can kind of see the whole thing. But what it does is it allows for reimbursement to come to jurisdictions differently than in the past. For the first time in 40 years, what it allows for is for jurisdictions to be reimbursed for prevention activities. The way the 4E structure is set up through the federal government is that jurisdictions are reimbursed for foster care activities. Family First allows for, um, evidence-based programs to be used to, um, prevent children from coming into care. So each state had to, um, develop a criteria for what does a candidate for foster care look like in your state? What are those characteristics that might make a child more likely to come into care? And then if the services are in place, can we reimburse this jurisdiction if the child doesn't come into care? So it's a long process to get the reimbursement, but we have set up the structure and we are in the implementation phases of it. So it's really a, a reimbursement structure that's different than what we typically have, um, for children in foster care.
Okay. And you talk about the mental health symposium that you had and out of that, uh, or their charge was to examine some of the gaps. What were those gaps that were identified?
So, um, one, as, um, one of your, your colleagues mentioned was, um, children backing up in the EDs particularly seasonally. What we saw that, you know, children were coming to the emergency departments and behavioral health crisis, particularly in March and in October, um, where there were, um, peaks of, you know, times at which the emergency departments, particularly at CCMC, would say, you know, we really need children to move through the assessment and on to treatment services a lot quicker. And so one of the pieces of the behavioral health continuum was, you know, whether we could implement services, like some of the initiatives that I listed before a child is in acute stress or as a step down after an acute episode of some behavioral health decompensation. So it's, it was through the entire process of really looking at what do kids need at school? Their social emotional needs at school? What do they need in communities so their parents can pick up the phone and call a 24/7 mobile crisis clinician? That can come out at any time of the day or at least provide telephonic responses 24/7 across the state. So again, pediatricians can get some additional help to support the clinical needs of their children all the way through to the deepest end of our children psychiatric hospital and psychiatric residential treatment facilities that are a part of our clinical continuum.
Got it, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Hartley, followed by Senator Moore.
Thank you. Hello, Senator.
Yes, and good afternoon. Kind of a, a long day here. Madam Commissioner, thank you so much, uh, for being with us and also for all of the work that you've done in preparation for today. But to share with us, um, really the progress that has been made on such an important, um, agency in, in, in our state. And, and I first of all noted your correction in, um, in, in your statement saying you are from Hartford, but I'm going to annotate that and say with roots, having started in Waterville.
Absolutely. I live in Hartford, I'm from Wattebury and raise my kids in Bristol.
Dooley County.
All bases covered.
Right. And was a regional administrator in Danbury. I got you, Representative Godfrey. Thank you.
So Commissioner, uh, you know, your leadership here, um, ha- has been transformational, um, with this department. You know, in your words, you talked about coming on, looking at your organization, um, and trying to look at it inside out and backwards to identify blind spots. Kudos, kudos to you as opposed to taking cookie cutter and just layering it on and moving on. Because that's really what we need, fresh eyes, fresh approach, um, to, to always kind of be out in front. And, uh, certainly after these last 24 months, uh, of what, uh, the state has gone through, but in particularly our, our children, um, and those, um, in the department's care. So a lot of questions have been asked here and you have really, um, answered them in great detail. I just wanted to go back to something we talked about personally, and that was that pilot, which is, I think, evidence of, uh, your leadership approach i- in terms of changing the dynamic and trying to get right to the heart of a problem in a different way. Um, where you, uh, on a pilot basis embedded in the schools. Now, I think this is, uh, probably very recent. I don't know if you have metrics about this. I'm wondering if you've had a chance to do some analysis of how that has worked and, um, you know, if in fact that is a model that might be scaled.
So there are metrics and the analysis of those are underway. But because, uh, as you've indicated, you, we are really early in the, um, the, the time to really be able to measure whether or not there's efficacy. One of the things that's hard too is when you measure a negative, you know, what we were trying to do is drive down the number of reports from those particular schools to see if there was the ability to, um, assist those education professionals differently. And so anecdotally, 100%, we've seen that across the three schools that we've had them in. But we want to be able to provide you with some real data to determine if it is statistically significant and if it's something we should invest and scale up.
So we will.
You'll hear from us.
Yeah, to be continued on that, um, because I think that's, uh, you know, some years ago, in the, in the, um, child probation, um, system, we put in a pilot where we worked, um, with the various agencies in town, um, to deal with, um, absenteeism.
Yes.
In, in, in the elementary schools. Because as we began to follow that, we recognized that that then led to dropouts, to truancy. And as we began to get our arms around it, we found many families that said, please, thank you for the knock on the door, um, for reaching out to us. Um, and so if you can get there before things move in the wrong direction and get embedded. I heard you talk about the fact that, um, the caseload in the juvenile court has spiked. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm interested in that because like many municipalities, we have had, um, a, a real spike in au- juvenile auto theft. And I'm wondering, um, from your vantage point and from the work in the department, uh, are you seeing this as a result of COVID? Is this something else that's going on? And your thoughts with regard to, you know, how we completely turn this around? I think in our conversation before, we talked about the fact that you get a youngster, you know, kind of acting with these pairs, this, this group is surrounding them, you know, and then all of a sudden they become of age. The light bulb doesn't go on and they don't turn around and say, oh no, I'm done with that. I'm going, you know, I'm going on in the right direction. It's like they have become part of, you know, a lifestyle and it's, and almost a, a culture, if you will.
So, um, one of the things I appreciate that you have articulated was the nuance as it relates to, um, our outposted staff. And then, you know, I will refer to the second part of your, um, questions and commentary. Our outposted staff in the past had been, you know, once there is a report made or helping to facilitate a report with law enforcement or hospitals or, um, school partners in some areas, as Representative Arnon talked about that. We've had outposted, uh, uh, workers in communities for quite some time that predated me. What we're talking about now is this notion of outposting our staff in a preventative way. And so you articulated it beautifully to say, you know, now that we know that a model of working in community really works with families that have, um, been referred to us and accepted for services on the child maltreatment side, can that be also as effective on the prevention side? And that's what this study will help us, you know, flush out a little bit to determine if this pilot can kind of help us in the prevention arena. So I, I appreciate you highlighting the nuances of that. You all from, on the committee, uh, understand and know, um, very, very vividly that the department, um, no longer has the statutory responsibility for juvenile justice since the closing of the Connecticut Juvenile Training School before I, um, came into this seat. However, children are children and in my, in my, uh, way of approaching adolescents particularly is that we continue to be linked arm in arm with all of the stakeholders who are working to make sure that all kids across Connecticut have what they need. And what you're describing when we saw a bit of a uptick in youth crime, um, during particular pockets of the pandemic, had to, um, really be creative with our partners of addressing some of those things like car thefts, like children being out pretty late, um, not in unstructured activities. And we are at the table with our stakeholder partners. And one of our ARPA initiatives really took that a step further in understanding the needs of children in our urban areas. And so one of our ARPA initiatives, um, took a model that, um, Dr. Meisa Akbar in Yale has, um, become a steward of. And that is the urban trauma model that instead of us taking ARPA money and giving it to Dr. Akbar, who would do a phenomenal job, what we did was use a learning collaborative model to have her really train other clinicians across the state to understand the unique needs of children in our urban areas, um, from a clinical basis. And so we, um, allocated our funding through the urban trauma model to, I can tell you how many providers. With this clinical intervention, there's a total of eight programs and four of Connecticut's urban areas of Hartford, Wattebury, New Haven and Bridgeport. And there's two providers in each of those communities who are now undergoing this, um, training in this urban trauma model in conjunction with the clinical treatment that they already provide for those particular communities. But it's the, um, for lack of a better term, additional pieces that our children in our urban areas might experience. So for instance, a, a little boy, you know, may not have been involved in a shooting that occurred in a community, but he certainly saw the, the lights outside of his bedroom window. He sees the police tape, he sees the increased activity in his neighborhood. He may, you know, walk to the bus stop and see a memorial that was a makeshift memorial that he has to kind of walk around to get to the bus stop. His little belly may be, you know, rumbling during school. He can't sit still because of what he has experienced. Those are experiences that tend to be unique to children in urban areas. And so we thought instituting an urban trauma provider network would allow us to address the needs of kids in ways that really, um, doesn't pathologize what that child is experiencing, but puts a clinical spin on what it is they need to be able to, um, have to address so that it doesn't turn into acting out that people don't understand or, um, turn out being, um, juvenile justice or delinquency related activities. So we're really trying to approach that from a multi-pronged approach, but also from the attention that, you know, kids of all of our cities and towns need, particularly in different ways.
Thank you so much, um, Commissioner, um, for your approach and, um, you know, science-based, um, outcome, uh, towards this. I, I'll be very interested to follow the, this urban tra- trauma model in the four communities that it's in. So at what interval do you think there would be an opportune time to make some assessments with those outcomes?
So, um, we can, I can get you an update from Dr. Akbar as to where she is in terms of the training of the, but I know they are well underway. And so she may be able to give us some feedback of the implementation because I believe there are clinicians that are currently exercising this model through her tutelage and they receive regular injections from her on different pieces of the model and can use her as part of their, um, consultation as they deliver it. So, um, I can speak with you very specifically about the providers in your area or any of the other legislators from the areas that I, um, kind of highlighted.
Right, and that'll be very interesting. But I think the real, um, interesting part of this and, and hopefully, you know, the, moving the needle is going to be, uh, when we start to look at the outcomes and the, and the, and the juvenile incidences. That's really where you want to start to make the measurement.
Absolutely. And along the diversion continuum, DCF also is the, um, uh, the state agency responsible for our youth services bureau and allocations to our juvenile review, review board. So we are very much at the table of, um, juvenile justice, um, although we don't have the statutory responsibility. We recognize our importance of being, um, active players in that, um, continuum.
Very much so. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Moore joins us virtually.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner Grantis. First of all, thank you for giving me some time over the weekend to talk to you. But, you know, I'm, I'm so impressed with what you, the neighbors knew and the holistic approach you take to our children. I've heard Senator Bonney say how important your job is looking over our children. And you were really, in my opinion, done a phenomenal job. Senator Hartley said it was transformational and she's, she's right, spot on with that. You know, I really got to know you during COVID-19. When you first came in, I was the chair of children's and we had so much stuff going on. I thought it was a really tough position to take on at a really hard time. But I watched the stuff that you've done and the changes and the inclusion of so many people. That, you know, we come to the table with an empty plate and when we get through talking to you, the food is all flowing off the plate. Uh, because you go in such depth, even in your testimony and your knowledge and, and reaching out in so many different ways for our children. I want you to know how much that means to me and I believe we're in good hands with you. I also know that during COVID-19, there were a lot of efficiency inefficiencies that we had to address. And, um, you, you've mentioned briefly some of the things. I, I really wonder, what did you have to tackle that was the toughest in the very beginning? And, um, how did you address it?
Thank you, Senator Moore. Thank you not only for the gracious comments, but also for your supportive leadership, um, throughout not only the pandemic, but throughout the four years that I've been here that you have been a legislator. I can pick up the phone and call or that you will call me if there is a, a question in your, um, geographic. I can pick up the phone and call or that you will call me if there is a question in your geographic area. Thank you for the question related to how we had to pivot during COVID-19. I think, you know, one of the biggest challenges in human services is the expectation that we're having human contact. You know, the expectation that the work we do is people related. And so even in the context of a telework agreement that was negotiated with our CBAC unions, we still expect in-person contact. We allow for virtual contact when necessary as part of their toolbox. But the expectation of all the work is in person. So that meant that during the pandemic, even in the the heat of the pandemic, we had to ensure that there was adequate PPE. We were just as many of the other industries impacted by COVID positive staff. We're seeing an uptick now of staff that are calling out sick. I just re-instituted today another set of attendance drills. So each leader and area office and divisions have an opportunity to know who's out sick on any given day. Because when there are significant numbers of people absent, you have to kind of maybe shift people to do other functions. We had to really respect the needs of and the wishes of some of our families. We know that many of the work in community required us during the pandemic to still conduct our work in an in-person way. And many of our families were afraid. They were afraid of allowing somebody into their house at a time when we were uncertain with this with this virus of what exposure that might mean. So I think, you know, as we mimicked the governor's unified command structure, every day we learned something different from our staff about what they were experiencing out there. And we were able to be flexible and change the way we approached our engagement with families without missing a beat. The department never closed. So I appreciate your question about some of the things very specifically that we had to do during that time.
And then I just want to comment on, you know, we have a gun violence commission on gun violence prevention. And I got to visit the wilderness camp. I'm going to share my ignorance. I had never been there and didn't really know what it was, but you opened the door. We went up and visited Litchfield County and some of our children from from Bridgeport actually got to participate shortly after that. So I appreciate your open door, being willing to talk to us and help us any way we can before our children get into trouble. So thank you.
We are very proud. I'm sorry. We are very proud of our clinically adventure based wilderness school that we have. And, you know, former Senator Whitcoast was a champion of the wilderness school. And we would invite anyone to come and visit and just see the programming there. It's more than just a camp. Many of you may have been on the Public Health Committee or Human Services in which we talked about the EpiPens being there because there are kids who experience programming that have never been in the woods before. We actually are in our second cycle of a partnership with Commissioner Dykes and Deep with a conservation corps that also allows for Department of Labor to pay kids to be a part of this conservation corps at our wilderness school that helps to clean some of the trails and from the brush if there has been storms or related environmental activities. So that's another opportunity for cross-agency collaboration that this administration champions significantly. So I appreciate the shout out to our wilderness school. They do great work up there. And I say to the director all the time, I can't talk about it enough every time I go to a graduation up there because there are, you know, people, they do a lot of staff training, they do team building, they do one day excursions, five days, 20 or 30 days, they they, you know, do excursions that require a compass. I mean, some of our kids didn't even know how to read those by experienced guides. And so we're really, really excited about the work and the continuing development of the work there at the wilderness school beyond just the outdoor activities. But ways that introduces that to children, but also addresses clinical needs of kids that might not otherwise be addressed.
So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. I see Representative Quinn has his virtual hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner, congratulations on your renomination. And I just want to join my colleague, the ranking member Yaccarino, in stating that I'm sorry that this is a Senate resolution and I can't vote for you. Because I thoroughly enjoyed our conversation last week, your knowledge of the job and the agency and quite frankly, your frankness on a number of topics. It was refreshing to me to hear that. And, you know, I know that you're going to continue to do a good job going forward. One question that I did have, and it's probably an unfair question because I think it'll be difficult to quantify. But you had stated in your earlier testimony that when the pandemic was ongoing and the schools were closed, you did see a drop in reporting because the schools are often a source of reporting because they're seeing the children in person. Is there any way to quantify how many kids might have slipped through the cracks during that period of time?
I appreciate the question and I also appreciated our conversation and the many topics that we were able to cover. One of the things that I think we collectively as a society is, you know, the ramifications of what happened during the pandemic likely won't be known for quite some time. I know that the schools did a lot of counting of children who may have been unreachable during that time. There were also some attention to some kids who didn't log on. And so initially, we leveled that with our local education authority on, you know, whether or not that was to be considered educational neglect. There were some situations where we actually sent a social worker out to someone's home and helped them connect a laptop or help them get onto the internet or wifi. There were multifamily homes that didn't have enough, and I'm not a tech person, but didn't have enough juice to be able to support laptops for all the kids or the wifi strength for all the kids to be able to do their schooling. We also did an inventory of all of our foster homes to ensure that they had what they needed during the pandemic to make sure kids got educated. So I do think that there is still an unknown of what occurred, but I know we did a lot of things right. And there are a lot of things that we did know as a result of working with our school partners and educational professionals during the pandemic because they had to weather the storm, but at the same time, we did with families.
And, you know, heaven forbid we ever have to go through something like that again. But are there any lessons that you think the agency learned during the pandemic in dealing with things on a virtual basis?
Many. And I was not a proponent for a lot of the virtual work. We saw an increase in a benefit of the quality of the narrative that our workers would produce as a result of having technology at their fingertips. There were many lessons learned throughout the pandemic, while I would hope we would never be in the throes that we were before. I think that the turnaround and the flexibility that we were able to enjoy during some very precarious times is something that if we were ever to be in this situation again, we're certainly prepared for.
Thank you very much. And again, congratulations on your renomination.
Thank you, Representative.
Are there any other questions or comments from committee members? Seeing none, Commissioner, congratulations again. I will echo some of the comments that from my colleagues that it is unfortunate that the House can't vote for you, but we we support you 100% regardless and good luck. But before you go, there's one question we ask of every nominee. Is there anything in your past you believe might prove embarrassing to this committee, to the governor, to the state of Connecticut?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you again so much and thanks for for sticking with us all day today.
Thank you.
We do have, before adjournment, we do have a few names of individuals who have signed up. I don't know if they're still here or virtually, but the first name we have is Nicole Tomasetti. Is Nicole here or in Zoom land? Zoom land, yeah, name of a movie. Moving on is Bridget Prince here. All right. And the last name we have here is Anne Manuski. Manuski. All right. Well, with that, I will adjourn the public hearing portion of the committee and go directly into the committee meeting once Madam Clerk is ready to roll. Do your thing. All right. So with that, I will officially call the Executive Legislative Nominations Committee meeting for Tuesday, January 17th, 2023 to order. The first item on the agenda is a House Resolution for Review. The nomination of Catherine Dykes of West Hartford to be Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection. Is there a motion? Motion made by Representative and then Arnon. Is there a second? Okay. So motion made by Representative Godfrey, motion or seconded by Arnon, Representative Arnon. Is there a discussion? Of course. Representative Yaccarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the committee and the running everybody. I did ask the Commissioner quite a few questions, I think valid questions. I'm going to vote yes today with the reservation if we don't get the issue straightened out by the time we go into the House to switch to a no. I think we need full disclosure and transparency, and I think it's important. And I didn't feel I got enough of that today, but I'm going to give her the benefit of doubt that we're going to get that clarified. We did have legislative intent. We all voted for it. And I think we need to be on the same page. I don't think one agency should go around the end around either legislatively or commissions or executives. I feel that strong, very strongly about that. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Any other comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Concepcion.
Yes.
Godfrey.
Godfrey, yes.
Yaccarino. Arnoni.
Yes.
D'Agostino. Gresko. Nuccio. Perillo. Quinn.
Representative Quinn votes yes.
Thank you. Retebliano.
Representative Gresko votes yes.
Thank you.
All right. Second item on the agenda is the House Resolution again for the renomination of Amy Porter of Coventry to be the Commissioner of Aging and Disability Services. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Representative Yaccarino. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Representative Arnon. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yes.
Godfrey.
Yes.
Yaccarino.
Yes.
Arnon.
Yes.
D'Agostino. Gresko.
Yes.
Nuccio. Perillo. Quinn.
Representative Quinn votes yes.
Retebliano.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on, our third item of the agenda is a Senate Resolution. The nomination of Jeffrey Beckham of Tolland to be the Secretary of Office of Policy in Management.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Senator Looney, seconded by Senator Hartley. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Duff. Senator Looney.
Yes.
Kelly. Fonfara. Hartley.
Yes.
Kushner. Martin. Moore. Summers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And last item on the agenda is another Senate Resolution for Review. The nomination of Vanessa Durantes of Hartford, but also via Waterbury, of course, to be the Commissioner of Children and Families. Is there a motion? Motion made by Senator Hartley. Is there a second? Seconded by Chairman Duff. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Duff. Senator Looney. Senator Kelly. Senator Fonfara. Senator Hartley. Senator Kushner. Senator Martin. Senator Moore. Senator Summers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that concludes our January 17th committee meeting. We will reconvene or we will, our next meeting is this Thursday, 10 o'clock, same room with with Zoom. With that, we will we will hold votes open until 4 o'clock today. So we will recess until then. Thank you.